February 17, 2015, meeting and public hearing of the City Falls Church Planning Commission is now in session. Ms. G., would you please call the roll?
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
At this time, Mr. Dejean, Mr. Meeks, and Mr. Wodisca are absent.
Yes, I think Mr. Wodisca is at work and will be coming in a little late. But we have a quorum, so we're going to go ahead. Is there a motion for adopting the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Aye, seconded.
Moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Are there any people in the audience who would like to speak on things other than are on the agenda? I have three speaker slips, and these will come during the CIP discussion. But if they want to speak about something else other than anything that's on CIP, please come forward. We ask you to speak your name, address, and be limited to three minutes, please.
Thanks. Rohini Winters.
Pardon?
Rohini Winters, 324 Grove Avenue. Since you gave us the opportunity, I would just like to ask that you consider the communication piece of the West End Park improvement. Because of the cold and everything, we can't tell exactly what's going on, but there's a lot of light pollution and some noise pollution from Broad Street coming onto the properties that border the park on Grove Avenue. I don't live in one.
Because the trees are down?
Sorry?
Because the trees are now down?
Because the trees are down. So, the residents who live there, I met with one of them earlier today, and she's quite concerned, just doesn't know whether there's a plan to put screening and replacement there. So I think it would be good if it was communicated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very nice point. And would you stop by Ms. G.'s desk and spell your name for her, so she can put it? Oh, you do? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business, and that is the capital improvements Update and public hearing for fiscal year 2016-2017 projects. We're going to hold a public hearing and continue it until Monday, February 23. Ms. Mester, would you like to start?
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commission members. My presentation, the public hearing part of your meeting, will be brief, since we'll be mostly delving into details during the work session. I did want to call your attention to the packet of materials that I've provided at the diocese this evening, which we'll walk through in a lot of detail during the work session, but a few things I wanted to note for the public. This full packet will be posted to the website, as well some of the subcomponents. So in your packet this evening, you have the final report of the online survey and some of the hard, raw data, because people have been asking me for that. So that's available, and that'll be posted to the website. It's a separate document in addition to this packet. And then also the February 8 Town Hall meeting summary results are also in your packet this evening. For this evening's work session, we'll be focusing on some follow-up items from February 2. The few pages are handed out for updating your notebooks, and most specifically, the downtown reinvestment project sheet is now produced, and so you have that in this packet to add to tab 8. And along with the standard project sheet, I've gone ahead and given you the comments from the Chamber of Commerce, Vipas, that just came in, and the notes from the January 9 business meeting. So you'll have all of that material right with the project description. We'll talk about transportation this evening, as well as parks, field, and track. Those are the sort of the subject areas we were going to cover last Monday, when the meeting was canceled. And then, of course, the key activity for the Planning Commission this evening will be to deliberate on any changes you want to make to the CIP that I presented to you on February 2, so that we can develop the motions and have that ready for you on the 23rd for the final hearing and adoption. So on the cover sheet of the memo, you'll see at the bottom of page 1, I included the key policy decisions that were in tab 1 of the CIP notebook. I just did an excerpt, so they'd be right and handy for you all. And the last thing I would then note is the attachment 1 is the information from Superintendent Jones on enrollment in land use that we had discussed at the February 2 work session. So with that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions or step aside for public comments.
I just have one quick one on the student enrollment. Is that something that's, that you can email to us?
Yes. I do have that chronically.
I know Mr. Meeks has been quite interested in seeing that, and he's not going to be here this evening. He's out of the country. But if you, if you were, I could email it to him. I just don't have it.
I'll be glad to email. I'll send it to you all, so you all will have it.
Okay.
We'll definitely get it for him.
That will welcome him when he comes home.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Mester, I've got a question about the one report we have here for the mixed use development fiscal impact report of 2012. Don't we have anything more recent than that? This is the one that's posted on the school site. And I know I emailed the EDA office and said, "Really?"
Yeah, I think they're working on updating it with the new projects now that things are starting to get occupied. But I can check on what the pipeline for that is.
Yeah, because certainly, you know, the changes in the revenue from them have increased, and so this is really out of date.
Yeah, some of it will be that when they're under construction, they haven't been fully assessed and occupied, and so they may be waiting for some of that. But I will check. This is the current information that they provided the superintendents. I wanted you to have the same.
All right, well, this is what's posted on the school site.
Yep.
I would point out, though, it does show in the bottom three rows, Rushmark, Lincoln, and Northgate as projects that are, you know, concerns them.
Right, right.
So it may need, it's at the beginning, certainly the beginning of an update.
Any questions for Ms. Mester before I open it to the public? Melissa? No? All right. I'd like to open this item to the public. We have four speaker slips. And before I do that, I'd just like to ask one quick question about the, this downtown plan. I know we've seen a couple of packets of materials circulating around about it. One is this, and the other is some comments that the city council representative, not the city council, the Chamber of Commerce representatives made to the city council. I just want to know, is this, this is something that will come before the Planning Commission for a formal review, right? Before it's implemented? Because these haven't been finalized, have they?
Uh-uh.
Yes, it would have to come to the Planning Commission. This is an idea. You're talking about the downtown plaza?
Yeah.
Drawings?
Yeah.
And you had, I think, requested to have copies of those. We provide them in your packet.
Okay.
But this is an idea that's being talked about. There's no official approval of this. It would have a number of steps to go through.
So there's two things that are happening.
Right.
One is the downtown reinvestment program, that's $600,000 in the CIP, and that's for improvements around North Washington and Broad.
And that's what the Chamber of Commerce commented on?
That's what the Chamber of Commerce commented on. Now, they also commented on the second initiative, which is the EDAs initiative for the downtown plaza, the mini-park process. That's a whole separate project, a different dollar amount, and that is not in the proposed CIP at this point. So at some point, it'd have to come back for funding, and it would have to come back for any site plan, formal action or briefing, depending on if it was administrative. But the $600,000 that's in the CIP is targeted more for pedestrian crossings and streetscape improvements, electric, water.
And, and those streetscape improvements, if they're a change from the approved streetscape, would they have to come before us as well?
If it wasn't consistent with the adopted plan, it would. At this point, it's more to make sure that we fix them, get the irrigation working, replant them, not change the whole sidewalk or streetscape.
Well, this kind of sounds like maintenance as opposed to a capital project.
It's a combination of them, and partly what we'll be doing as we refine this, we're setting, propose to set aside the money for downtown improvements, but as we really narrow down what the projects are, because you'll see that some of the comments from Vipas and Chamber are indeed maintenance, so they wouldn't be in the CIP. You can have ancillary maintenance with a capital project. So if we're redoing some curb cuts and ramp and the traffic signal poles and pet heads and all that, then you can paint the crosswalk or fix broken bricks in the streetscape tree bed and not be considered maintenance.
Okay.
And once we finalize the project, we'll have to really fine tune which budget it goes in.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I might, I'm liaison to the EDA, and I've been at all the meetings for this. And at the last meeting, they decided to go out and get a cost estimate on two of the plans that were initiated here. And I've greatly encouraged the chair of the EDA to come forth and meet with us, and, so we can be a little bit more informed about it. But at this point, they're trying to get a cost estimate, you know, just for some more information to bring forth.
So it's not going to be in this, in this CIP that we're discussing at all, unless it's for some out years?
Don't know.
I mean, they can't make the.
It won't be in the CIP for year action by next Monday.
Yeah, okay.
Because they don't have the cost estimates or a funding source. So whether it evolves further during the council process, the time seems a little tight to me, but if it does, then we'll make sure as we do a joint work session with council on the CIP that you two bodies are aligned with it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, just in case anybody was going to be commenting on it from the audience. All right. Our first speaker slip is for Michael Volpe. Mike, I think you know the drill.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Michael Volpe, 314 West Columbia Street, Falls Church. I'm speaking tonight as a resident of the city, not on behalf of any board, commission, or civic organization. I've come tonight to express my support for the library project, which I realize is not in the current year CIP, but I think it's an important project, and I would like the Planning Commission to keep, and other city officials, to keep their focus on this. I have lived in the city since 1975. I've served on the Planning Commission from 1987 to 1994. And as a member of the Planning Commission in the late 1980s, I helped review the expansion and renovation of Mary Riley Stiles Library. At that time, there were many voices who were calling for a major expansion, possibly even relocation, of the library to make it the equivalent of the size of the Piment Hills Library in Fairfax County, the Central Library in Arlington. We explored, we, Planning Commission, city council, and many others in the city, explored the options very carefully, and embarked on a project to renovate and slightly expand the Mary Riley Stiles Library. I believe the Planning Commission and other city groups have performed due diligence again on this project, which is now part of the city's capital improvement program, CIP. And I support the proposal that the Library Board of Trustees has presented to renovate or slightly expand the library in its current location. I would not support relocation of the library to any new development project that might take place here in the city. I also support the city's proposal to build a shared parking structure adjacent to the library property. And I would urge the Planning Commission and other city bodies and officials to support this library project and to approve it in next year's CIP. Thank you.
Thank you. Is he real? Make sure it stays, I think. The second one is Dave Haggy.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Dave Haggy, 306 Shadow Walk, and I want to just talk about the turf field up at the high school and the need to replace it. There are lots of options, spend city money, whether the library, the high school, there are lots of things to plan for, and there are a lot of options. But with the turf field, it's real simple. It's a, it's a have-to-have. We can't not have a field. We don't have enough other fields for, for sports to, to use. Field hockey and football in the fall, soccer and lacrosse in the spring, not to mention flag football in the fall, but the Parks and Rec does, Field Day for MEH. We can't not have a field. It has to be certified, which makes it insurable, and Coach Green tells us that after the football season, sometime in early to mid-November, the field will no longer be usable. And we just, it's not, it's not a nice-to-have, it's a have-to-have. So I just want to remind everybody here, and I will be doing the same with city council people that I run into, that it's a must-have. So I appreciate your support, and thank you for letting me talk about it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, I'm also here at Rohini Winters, 324 Grove Avenue. I'm also here to express my opinion that you should rank highly the George Mason turf for this planning year for the CIP. My fourth grader plays lacrosse. This is her third spring season. Actually, actually, it's her fourth spring season. And I strongly feel like if she grows up playing on her home field, she'll be more likely to continue with a team sport such as lacrosse or another girl's sport. Our traveling teams and our high school players already travel too far for their away games, and I just can't see having to displace them for a whole season or more if we don't do something this year. My other comment, if I may, regarding the CIP, is to continue to work with the comprehensive plan from the Parks and Recs chapter to connect the parks. If we could ensure that the WOD Trail and West End Park connect to the library and the Cherry, Cherry Hill Park, that is part of their vision, whether it be through Broad Street, better setbacks and greenery, we can ensure walkers and bike riders continue to use our parks, but also transit our city safely and green. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Thurston, 1015 Birch Street, speaking on behalf of the Village Preservation and Improvement Society. We sent a letter concerning the downtown investments for the reuse of the water fund proceeds. First off, we'd like to say we fully support the use of those funds in the downtown area, the amount that's being designated. That's a great idea in order to bring vibrancy to downtown and to do some things that need to be done for a long time. And of course, there's a lot of items on the agenda that are possible, but not all can be afforded. So in our letter, we placed in there some priorities we think are more important than others, and that one of the highest ones would be fixing the irrigation system. We've heard a lot from the business community about the maintenance of the planting beds and the issues in the downtown area. And in fact, the Village Society funded $10,000 within the last couple of years to plant, to replant the plant beds. Unfortunately, because of the lack of the irrigation system working properly, much of those planting materials were lost. And so the thing to do is to, to get it right and to go back and fix the irrigation systems that may be broken, or to, to make adjustments if those are required. Secondly, then, of course, is repopulating those plant beds. Everybody wants to see the flowers in the summertime, the spring flowers blooming either in the baskets or in the planting beds. And in order to do it, we've got to get the plants in there. Third is putting things in, one of the reasons why things are not being taken care of, there's no water bibs in front of the businesses. And in order to make that viable to, to water those planting, those baskets, or to specially water the spring flowers, is to have water bib somewhere. And we have to believe there's a water connection somewhere because the irrigation system's there. There must be an interconnect, and from that interconnect, a hose bib could be put on and then be accessed by a maintenance crew or the business owners or whoever's watering at that time. And then to get the plants back in there. We definitely agreed with the city staff's suggestion that the signal poles be replaced at the Broad and Washington intersection. Right now, it's a mismatch. It's kind of an eyesore. You have two poles that are from the streetscape, and then two poles that are from the 1960s or before that make this intersection look awkward. That's one of the best ways, a very high priority, to get that fixed in order to upgrade that intersection and make it look nice. And then, of course, the expansion of the lighting a little bit further up the block would be great as well, as long as it meets the current city standards. We noticed we're talking about LED lights there, and we noted in our letter that we think it's important that the color and intensity, the luminosity, match the current, and not to have a mismatch of lighting of different styles. If you want to see that, you can go to several places I can point out, and your eye immediately picks it up as something's wrong here. It doesn't create the complete look and the quality that we're all looking for for Falls Church. So we'll comment further as this proceeds downstream, but we do want to make sure everybody realizes we do support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair. Yes, Ms. Hockenberry.
Could I ask Ms. Mester, before, before the folks leave for, in supporting the field, to explain the difference in the funding of that situation right now? The fact that we cannot guarantee it for 10, 10 years, so it's coming out of?
I'll be glad to clarify that for the record. So it is on, in the CIP for FY16 under tab 3, and it is in the blue color for water sale proceeds use, because with our redevelopment opportunities up there, it may or may not be in the same place in 10 years, and that would be the requirement to do debt financing. So we're using cash, because we know there will be a period of time from fixing the field, so it's safe and usable till the redevelopment occurs.
Is that something we talked about before?
We kind of.
I don't remember.
We kind of talked a little bit about it. It was mentioned, and just the fact that it would not be part of the debt service.
During the, my overview presentation I did, but actually, this evening will be the Rexon Park Field and Track discussion that was postponed from last Monday, so we actually haven't had a good opportunity to discuss it yet. But Mr. Horn and Mr. Schlitt will be joining us for the work session.
Yes, it was mentioned, but it makes sense when you realize we can't guarantee it'll be there for 10 years.
Right, right. And I see it's in blue.
Yes, for water.
Correct. I guess we should move on to your overview, or did you give the overview, and we want to move on then to, moving on to our work session. So I'll close the hearing to the public and move on to, since we have no other business, we will move on to approval of minutes of 2nd of February. Comes later. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
They're very short.
They were online.
I did, I did notice that Mr. Meeks was here last, Mr. Meeks was here at the February 2nd.
Yes.
Yes, but it says he was absent.
Where is this?
In, in these minutes that I'm holding.
February 2nd?
Maybe you noticed it already, but this is, this is the one that you sent via email. So that was the only thing that I noticed. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Aye, seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. You've got approved minutes as amended. We'll move on to Planning Commission reports. Haven't been out this week. Any reports from the Planning Commissioners? Okay. Now, we'll move on to the Planning Director's Report. Mr. Snyder, do you have a Director's Report for us?
Yes, ma'am. I wanted to just point out a couple of things. Particularly, wanted to mention, remind folks that there is a, an important public meeting this Saturday, February 21, to go over a draft of the West Broad Street Small Area Plan. This is the area from Little Falls Road out to the WOD Trail area. This is a follow-up to a meeting we had in the summertime where we got public input. We've been working on a draft plan, and we'll be unveiling the draft plan for comment to the community on Saturday, the 21st, at the Columbia Baptist Church from 9 to 11. Certainly want to encourage the public to attend. We put out more than, I think about 200 mail, mail items.
298.
298, as well as email. I know it's a tough time of year with the weather and everything, but we're looking forward to good participation by public and commissioners. We had hoped to have a work session with the Planning Commission prior to this, but because of weather and other things, we'll, we'll catch up with you after that meeting. I think that may actually be more useful.
Actually, yeah.
Because we'll get a chance to talk about the feedback we got. So we're looking forward to that. It's, you all have a draft copy, I believe, that we supplied earlier to you, and I think the plan is in good shape for a first draft. Also, as highlights in, in, in last month, the Parks for People update, the comp plan was approved by this body, and we'll be going to the city council. We had hoped it would be approved last week, but because of events here at City Hall, it's going to have to be heard later on this month. But I think that's in good shape to go forward and be the second chapter of the comp plan to be updated by, by the city council. We did have a meeting with the Harb to talk about the reuse of the Cloverdale House, the blue and gray building, that had been vacant for some time on Park Avenue. It's now been purchased by Brian Normile, who is a builder restaurateur in Arlington, and he showed draft plans for how the historic building might be converted for reuse as a cafe and restaurant. There was some very good comments made by the Harb, and we had a staff meeting with him recently where he's made additional changes. We expect there'll be a site plan coming before the Planning Commission to look at that property. Again, this is an historic property, oldest house in the city, that poses challenges to its redevelopment, is zone commercial B2, and.
Do you know the date on that house?
I, I, yeah, it's, it's 18th century.
I always thought, oh, I forgot the name of it now, where Mitch Wang lives. I always saw that was the oldest.
There was a, we can give you a more detailed update on that, because there's a lot, Deborah's done a lot of work on that, and we've got some good background on it, which we have shared with the applicant. That was a good, a good discussion. Also, you, we did some work in-house, developing a powerpoint, looking at deficiencies in the downtown area, along with other departments and their staff, and, and that collective effort, I think, is part of what has, has been used to develop the downtown improvement plans that the city manager's office has been working through with the Chamber of Commerce. So I think that's been a very good collaborative effort by multiple departments. We have, we've prepared a mini-tap application to look at the city property yard in the Gordon Road Triangle area. This was something Urban Land Institute suggested that we could do. It does not cost the city anything. It's at a lesser scale than the typical taps, but we want to get some thinking about what the possibilities might be for collaborative use of those properties. This would be in advance of some future study of that area. And also, as a part of our discussions at the Planning Directors Meeting in COG, ULI and COG were also looking for other applications. and COG were also looking for other applications, and they thought the Seven Corners area, the Eastern Gateway area, would be a very good project. We have applied for that. We'll see if we get it, but that would be in the fall of 2015, assuming we got it and decided to do it. But those are both efforts to advance our long-term planning areas in crucial areas near Metro. So those are some of the highlights of things we've been doing. Also, you no doubt heard in the press about the explosion at Eden Center. Our building safety crew and team was involved with the fire marshal in evaluating that after it happened, and so there was good discussion about that. It was, turned out to be a jeweler and some explosion caused by, I think, some propane and sparks. Unfortunately, they were in the same place at the same time, so fortunately, no serious injuries, but damage done, so. Those are some highlights of our work in the last month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Snyder, you just mentioned some looking at the property yard. Isn't that part of our next small area plan?
It's part of...
Is that the next section we're going to, or is it going to be the school area?
It's the one we've talked about doing next, and the mini-tap is a group of younger ULI people who may take a look at this. We think it would be good advance, work in advance of that small area plan. Schools is kind of on its own schedule, so we think the Gordon Road Triangle is probably the next one to look at on the schedule, once we finish West Broad. We would expect West Broad would be finished this fiscal year, and we could then kick off the west end, the Gordon Road Triangle, maybe in the summer of 2015.
Because it'd be a good idea to consider the west end, along with any use of the school property also. You know, it's going to be, it's going to be, you know, important to look at it together, too.
Now that we actually own within the city proper all of the property yard, it gives us more, it's a good time to take a look at our property and see what can be done with it, and how it might relate to the adjacent properties.
Thank you.
We hope this will give us some insight. We'll keep you posted as this comes along. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Melissa?
So, one, with the material we've received up here, we did get a copy of a letter Vipas had sent to Lincoln Properties about the name change. Are you also hearing that they're considering changing the name of the property from Reserve at Tanner Hill to Lincoln at Tanner Hill?
I saw that today, and I've copied that email to Mr. Rose and some others to let them know of this concern. My understanding was that the Reserve was a corporate name that they had for apartments that they developed.
Right.
They're thinking of changing that corporate name from Reserve to the name of their company. But, and I know they have been working with the assistant city manager and others on, and Henderson and the Tanner Hill Foundation Group, about the appropriate location of the arch. There's a lot of ongoing work right now on that.
Yeah, I was going to ask, because it said that you guys had a February 4th meeting about the arch, and I was wondering...
Yeah, there was a detailed meeting, and Ms. Mester was involved in that, along with other staff. A lot of discussion.
It was a good collaborative discussion, and we're working to schedule the second follow-up meeting after they did some additional studies. It was going to be tomorrow, but I think it's going to be rescheduled for February 26th.
Okay. I mean, because there is some concern, I guess the arch as it is right now is still in place, just with the cover on, over it.
Yes, it's all encased in the metal and the wood to protect it.
Yeah, because there's just some concern about if they can actually even move it without something happening to it, because of the way it was put in.
Yeah, they've done a lot of detailed research into that, as well as looking at the original DVD of the making of the monument.
Okay. I hope when, after that next meeting, we can get a report on what's going on with the arch and what they're considering. I guess my other question, I was just wondering if we have an update on Broad and West, or Mason Row, or whatever we want to call it at this point? Because I understand that at some point, I heard that they were going to try to come back in on a second reading, but the project's changed substantially, so I assumed at some point, we're going to have, we may have to start over with a first reading.
They have, they have refiled, and I think we most recently got their traffic information, so we're beginning, we're going to be beginning to look at the information as filed. I will have to double-check the timing. I believe there is a plan to try to bring the revised plan briefing to the EDC, whether it be planning commission, city council, and economic development folks, to be able to see this revision, and then it would be having to go through the regular process. But Gary Fuller's developed a detailed outline of dates for that, which I can share with you, can email that to you.
I just hope, if it's substantially changed, that we're going to start at first reading, and not try to pick it up in the middle. I don't think that's fair to the public process.
There has been an additional piece of property added.
Right.
Which is the last commercial piece on Broad Street. There's a small red brick office building that's adjacent to St. James Church.
Right.
Been added to the property.
Yeah, I think that's been added, and other properties have been subtracted, and...
I think actually, all of the...
Or did they bring them back in now?
Yes, all of the original properties, plus that last one, so it's, it's everything to the west of the property zone by St. James Church.
Okay.
Madam Chair, before we go on, could I kind of publicly ask, with the powers that be out here, that we have the light fixed down at the end of the stairway, the entrance to City Hall? It's been out for like a month, and so when you walk down there, you're in your own shadow.
Who do you think does that?
I don't know. I figured somebody out there, you know? Look at all those powerful people.
I think we should make...
I just figured I'd put it on the record.
We should make public works possible.
I guess it's just anybody with a ladder.
Just go off, you know?
Fix the light, yeah. But... All right, if there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, so that we can move on to our work session on the CIP.
So move.
A second.
Meeting is adjourned. Well, Chair and Commissioners, if you're ready, we'll be glad to start the work session.
We are recording like we did last time, so I will ask your indulgence to make sure you grab a microphone before we start the dialogue, because we are editing the tape and then putting it on the website. So just a little bit more follow-up on the packet that I gave you all this evening. And for staff, I didn't get all the copies made prior to this meeting, so you'll get your staff copies for your notebook tomorrow. For the first item on the cover memo, we talked about the enrollment data and the land use, but I also wanted to highlight the link that the superintendent provided as a follow-up to Ms. Hockenberry's question about what renovations have been done at the high school and all schools, and that website link will take you to a list of what's been invested in the school buildings. As I mentioned, you do have in your packet the survey report, and it's an eight and a half by 11, and then full legal size. The eight and a half by 11 gives you a synopsis of the data, and Paul was kind enough to help, and so you also have some analysis on the question one and two, what was most important to folks when they ranked them, but then also tax support for increases by project type. So I wanted to call that to your attention, and also note that the raw data is here, both what Paul analyzed and what Survey Monkey provides, because I've been getting requests for that. And as Paul and his statistical analysis reminds us, that Survey Monkey takes a lot of qualitative stuff and tries to make it quantitative with a score. So keep that in perspective, so I've highlighted that in the summary. I also, on the legal sheet, is all 320 comments that were on the individual surveys submitted, and then I've taken about eight categories and broadly classified the responses into that. Now, you can't just look at yes and no and get a good feel, because if there was support for the school, it could be the turf, it could be the high school, it could be Mount Daniel, and if you saw parks, it could be a pool. Yeah.
Actually, it's fascinating.
It is fascinating, and I did, however, give you a summary on page three of the summary report of about 15 themes that popped out. It reinforces the challenge that's before you all of folks not wanting the taxes raised, addressing infrastructure and priority needs, the timing of it, and then fund capital and not operating. And theoretically, that sounds good, except the operating staff have to implement the CIP, and so it's not totally separate. Or as we were talking with the downtown reinvestment, there's some stuff that's sort of in both camps that we'll have to sort out. So I think it is informative. Obviously, since I combined some stuff, there's a lot of infrastructure on walkability sidewalk roads, utilities, sometimes the utility was stormwater, sometimes it was sewer. So I just, you know, put them together, roads, traffic signals, sort of that infrastructure piece, and then parking and transit and bikes seemed to kind of break itself out. So that was sort of the general theme. There are some that a comment has no, yes or no in a column, and that's because it was one that didn't fit any of the categories, but, so it was just one that didn't have a lot of frequency, so I didn't create another category. Plus, I was trying to keep it on one page with the columns. So there's a lot of good data there, but like I said, look at the themes and then also read the individual comments, because there was a lot of good nuances in there. For the...
First time ever for the CIP.
We've done two community surveys with the Parks for People chapter and the ability for all modes. So this is, but this is certainly the largest response, with 875 responses and 320 open-ended comments. The town hall meeting summary is also in your packet. As I noted, you have analysis of sort of how people prioritized by score and by bar chart. And both in this tool and in the survey, a lot of people had feedback like, can't do it, it's not statistically valid, I don't have enough information, and others said, this is great, this was helpful. So first time out of the gate, I think we'll have lessons learned. But it's challenging, no matter what, to distill a complex issue of CIP into a survey tool. But at the bottom line, I feel it was a good educational tool, and a good opportunity to engage the community. And I also just provided the raw data for that. And just as a reminder, there was 20 comment forms submitted at the town hall meeting versus the 875, so you'll have to weigh and balance the input as you analyze for yourself the thoughts. So I wanted to do that, and I'd also emailed the planning commission, but just so that I do it at a public meeting. Communications office reorganized the CIP website a little bit more, so it's easier to find topics on there. And so now we have all of the three project videos up, and all the videos from the town hall meeting, your presentation, and your first work session, so anybody who isn't able to join us in person can re-access and hear the dialogue and questions. Yes, please. Mike, can you hand, thank you.
I can reach it. No, can we put out that info, that, you know, try to disperse it through, somehow through the, maybe the, that weekly thing or the monthly thing that it's on?
They've done one notice in eFocus on the survey, and we can redo that, and I know they did a social media push with Facebook and Twitter as well. And we will post the actual results, as I mentioned earlier, on the website as well, so we'll do a push with that. So that was some of the information in the packet, and then what I wanted to do next is do an overview of transportation, followed by parks, fields, and track. And then, as I indicated, we'll start delving in and allowing you all to deliberate on what changes you want or don't want to the CIP. I do have the computer here at the chair's request, so if we want to noodle any scenarios, we can certainly do that. And I will, I guess, call out the last item in your packet, attachment six, draft, all caps, handwritten, draft, draft. This is the beginnings of the motions built off of last year's template, so that as you're thinking about it this evening, and if you have anything concrete that you want me to prepare in advance of next Monday's meeting, I can have the motion prepared into the planning commission clerk's hands. So before we jump into transportation, any questions?
You want to ask about...
Or comments? And I do appreciate the planning commissioners who were able to join us on Sunday. I think we had a good dialogue. All right, well, then with transportation, you can either look at the summary sheet under Tab 3, or go to Tab 8, and I might suggest that, because I wanted to talk to the big sheets, as I've been calling our new resource tool here. It's the one that folds out in ledger size.
That's beautiful.
And we have joining us this evening Stephanie Taylor, our transportation engineer. And Stephanie, this is the first CIP round since you've joined us, I think. Yes?
Well, you were at...
So we have her joining us now.
You were, no, but you weren't you... Yeah, right.
Yeah. And Mike Collins, this is second year, because we got him last year, just as he started, so, and of course...
We're going to send him early.
And we had Paul start her with us. So we have Public Works and Development Services planning here to help answer any questions and comments. So what I wanted to do is just let you all know sort of what this document is, and you can see on the first page, delivery schedule, and so staff have worked even harder than last year to refine the delivery schedule, match grants, money, grant requirements, staff resources. So now you can see when it's going to be in design and when it's going to go into construction. And it's also organized by program areas, so you have the South Washington, Downtown, and West Broad, and then some non-commercial areas and neighborhood traffic calming. It continues on the next page with more infrastructure, some of that core stuff, and this was things that indeed the people commented on in the survey for traffic signals and streetscape and road and crosswalks. And on the bottom of Page 2, James Mack and Paul have worked hard to capture all of the grants that we are, have received, but we haven't allocated them to projects yet, because we have projects that need to be completed, and we need staff resources, or is money we could go after if we had matched money to capitalize on federal and state money. So this is one area, as you know, that's predominantly funded with grant monies, and that's good and bad, because we can leverage our dollars farther, it comes with more work. But it also created some interesting questions from people responding to the survey, because they were like, well, why are you doing that? That's not our priority. And of course, then he gets into the funding sources, and it's part of the priority, but that money can't go to another project. And then on the third page, we have some new pie charts that Mike was the creator of, using a lot of staff input, but what we tried to give you is a visualization of the staff resources that are dedicated to CIP. And of course, those staff don't do 100% CIP, they do other tasks, so this way, and a lot of these are things that the planning commission sees when it's site planned, special exceptions, or comp plan updates. So here you can see how the engineering staff has broken out, planning, inspections, administrative, and operations, and the blue is transportation CIP, and then we also have the other CIPs that captures facilities and stormwater. So in total, there's 16 staff that are working CIP projects, 16 FTEs, not that many. And that also is a way for us to represent to you all, with the two fiscal years where we brought on three staff, how they're now allocated out, and we're working projects. Faster and harder, but still a long way to go. Faster and harder, but still a long way to go. In the transportation arena, let me also just highlight that we are using water sale proceeds for the downtown improvements, the $600,000, one time, $200,000 for neighborhood traffic calming, one time, and then some money to match a federal grant that allow for some planning of the downtown planning opportunity area and implement the adopted plan. The neighborhood traffic calming, I want to highlight, is only one year, because I know that council just received a briefing from Paul and the CACT on the updates for that plan, and we have a lot of applications in the win, in the offing. But unless we find additional sources of funding, then we'll just get one year's worth of funding. So most of this is grant, water sale proceeds, and green, under tab three again, is only if we can match that funding. So with that, I wanted to give you that highlight, and then the experts at the table to answer any specific questions on projects or staffing.
Have we lost any money from not being able to match it, or anything like that? And I know sometimes the money runs out, the use of, with the timing, and what's our status on all of that type of situation? Because I know lots of times you all do some marvelous shifting of money, so that we can still use it for defined purposes, because it gets very complicated.
Yes, I'll let Paul take the stab at that.
So I think the short answer is, have we lost any money? So you asked sort of a two-part question.
Probably three or four.
Yeah, so I'll, so one part, and then the second part breaks down. So, looking backward, has the city lost any funds, because it hasn't implemented the projects quickly enough? I think the answer to that is yes. There were some streetscape funds along...
D20.
Yep, so some, some, it was just about $400,000, I think, for streetscape changes along West Broad. That $400,000, it sounds like a big number, but it wasn't sufficient to actually do sort of a substantially sized project, and so that always fell down to the bottom of the priority list for the city, so it wasn't implemented.
Something similar to West, Northwest Street?
A situation, yeah, similar situation where there was funding there, but not enough to actually complete the project. Looking to the future, if you look at the big sheet, long sheet?
Big sheet.
Big sheet. As Cindy referred to it, on the available but unallocated funding, you'll see in FY16, the city's expecting to push, it looks like, $320,000 into its CNI equivalent funds. At the funding level of $320,000, that would not be sufficient to access the city's full share of NVTA 30% funds. And in any given year where you, where a jurisdiction doesn't access its full share, that money's lost effectively, that it rolls back up into the regional pot, and the city gets, I think, 3% out of that regional pot, so the city's effectively losing that money in any year it doesn't access it.
Okay, so, looking at these changes where we have product removed to advance other projects under the South Washington Street area. So when we say that the multi-modal changes, South Maple Avenue City Line are removed now, does that mean we're losing all those crosswalks that we, that was part of that plan? We had crosswalks at several locations, not, because, I mean, it looks like the one, I don't know, I mean, I'm just, I just remember some of the big changes we had is we were going to have more crosswalks there.
We have done some prioritization and phasing on it, so I don't know if, which one of you wants to tackle that? Stephanie?
Well, while the one big project idea is no longer, you know, how we're approaching this, we're actually going to complete the South Washington and Maple Street intersection project with other funds that are in the POA. So, will you lose the crosswalks? No. Will it take longer to implement the improvements? Yes, because we're phasing it out based on the funding available and the staff resources that are available.
Okay, so they're, but they aren't currently on this chart, is what I'm seeing.
Washington and Maple is, and we also plan to do Washington and Annandale, just improvements there, but the other ones are not.
Yeah, west of, west of Maple is not programmed.
Okay.
And we don't, it's not programmed.
Okay. Can we get, I mean, I hate to be a stickler on this, but we spent a lot, a lot of time on that South Washington plan. I mean, we spent many, many hours putting together this plan to make that section of the city pedestrian-friendly, and to make those intersections work better for everyone. So I guess it's, I'm kind of a little uneasy about the fact that it's been totally changed around. And so what I, I'd just like, at some point, some kind of graphic showing me what we're going to get within the current CIP. And what, and I guess, I don't know, maybe I can dig it out of my cabinet, but I'd like to know what the changes were, because this is substantially different than what we worked on in the past. And I had no idea that this project had been changed this much until we got this chart, and I looked at it a couple days ago.
I think we can do the concept plan, because I think in many ways it hasn't changed, but it has been refined. So we are, eventually we'll get to the way Maple and Washington intersection, Reserve at Tanner Hill is doing the Tanner Hill one, so we took that out, we weren't going to be paying for that. We're going all the way up to Annandale, improving the intersections, the crosswalks, the Transit Plaza's still in there. In fact, next week, I think we're having the stakeholder meeting with Ketch and Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation for some of the art design on that piece that's coming straight out of the South Washington plan. So the adopted concept plan that's in the POA is what we're working on, and we're heading towards 65% now for designs for South Washington.
I mean, I just, I couldn't find the paperwork from back then, the form, but it just seemed, we had a lot more that was going to go on between Maple Avenue and the City Line, so it's sad to see that out of there. Because we've got two big neighborhoods on either side there that would allow us to connect people over, because on the Fairfax County side, there's a nice big neighborhood back in there that has no services. So it'd be great for them to be able to walk across the street.
As a former resident of that neighborhood, and that was always something that we really wished was there, but it just becomes a question of priorities. And that, and that project, that component of the project becomes exponentially more complicated, because you add in VDOT and Fairfax County.
Right.
And so it becomes a question of where do you spend your time? So we would spend a great deal of staff time trying to implement that, and there'd be opportunity costs.
So I guess the other thing, so we removed two pieces of it, we've delayed other sections by two years. So what did we get by removing those two? I mean, did we get something additional, or did we, our costs go up, so we couldn't do the whole project?
Essentially, we can now concentrate on, we can finish the intermodal plaza and the improvements between Tanner Hill to Annandale, and we could accelerate the Maple Avenue intersection, which becomes critical with the new, two new developments that work through that corridor. I think that was a lot of the, yeah, undergrounding, you know, so we can focus on improving that core, that segment of the corridor where...
So it's just about speeding the other projects up, even though the two of them are delayed right now, anyway, but I guess, that's that.
Yeah, so one of the things that's happened, I think that the staff you're looking at in front of you is effectively all new, and so the staff we have now is sort of stepping into a situation where the CIP sort of existed before we got here. And so, last year was a first attempt to sort of rationalize what was in the CIP in terms of grant dollars coming in, projects that were scheduled, what sort of staff was on hand to actually work things. For a long time, I think you've seen the staff sort of respond to whatever's the latest request. Who's calling my phone today? That's what I'm going to do. That's not a great way to structure your CIP, because these are projects that take a long time.
And I don't disagree with that, Paul, but this project itself was not of what we want now. This was actually, I don't know, Ruth, what do you think we spent on this? A lot of time over a long period of time.
I'm confused, too, because I'm not quite sure what the South Washington Street multimodal, multimodal improvements mean. That, that plaza that we were talking about with the benches and stopping from going up to that street?
And the changes in the street and everything?
I was hopeful that that was going to go away, so...
The Transit, the Transit Plaza, if you want, I'll bring up the concept plan, but...
Yes, we're delaying it, maybe it'll go away, so...
The Transit Plaza's still planned, and that's the federal money, and it has to go for that. The elimination of the right turn onto Hillwood to make a more traditional intersection and good crosswalk is still planned. Actually, I would say a lot of it is still there. Really what's not there is from Maple to the City Line, which is sort of like Phase Three. But everything else that's in the adopted South Washington area plan is there. In fact, we've improved undergrounding and streetscape, so we're focusing on that whole area instead of just doing part of it. But I think Mike's right in terms of what happens between Maple and the City Line, which had been the original plan. But it is very complex, because it's a national highway, we got VDOT, VDOT was very concerned about getting rid of the middle turn lane. That is an area in the Providence District that Supervisor Smith is now doing her own area plan on the county side, but it's not timed with ours. So if we started now, we'd be mismatched with what they want to plan. So I think this is a good, good questions, a good dialogue, because we need you all to understand sort of how we got here. But I feel confident it's still a good plan, and we're utilizing the money, and we're actually back on track, instead of spinning our wheels at 25% design, which it seemed like for a long time.
Specific to that last comment about Supervisor Smith and the area plan, I've spoken to a number of residents in that neighborhood, and had to tell them that this was not currently programmed with the city, which they were disappointed by. But I noted if, as the county focuses and develops a plan through there, then we're starting to develop that partnership and that consistency of vision that makes this a more feasible plan. Right now, though, with, with those two other major stakeholders that may be pointing in different directions, it doesn't seem like a wise usage of very limited city staff.
I get that, I just, you know, I guess, I just didn't expect this project to just suddenly change like this, after it's, a lot of time was spent on putting it together in the first place. But, and I see, like, throughout here, you've got other things that are delayed, and I'm assuming this has to do with how many people we have to do this.
That would be correct. And the two new staff are on board, but they're just now on board, so we need to get them oriented to the city, our requirements of the grants, and it's helping immensely, the two that came on this year, plus James Mack the year before, but it's still a whole lot, it's what, $13 million worth of transportation projects we're delivering? So, 12 million. So hopefully it's right-sized, but there's still a lot of devils in the detail, because Washington is still a national highway, so we've made good progress with VDOT, but it's not us solo. And we're partnering with Reserve at Tanner Hill, which has helped with some of the undergrounding and the traffic signals. What I'll do is pull out the concept plan and see what Stephanie and James have for a good concept, so we can kind of show you the difference and get you updated. I do believe we're doing a lot. What we're not doing is some of the intersections past Maple, and I think one of them actually, the warrant study was questionable as to whether we were actually going to need that traffic signal, but I got to pull that back out.
Yeah. But I still think it's a good idea of this organization that you started last year, to combine things within a certain area, so that you can see the whole picture of it and not do things that are going to be detrimental to something else, or that has to be done over, and, because I think that's absolute insanity. But I think the other thing the public really needs to know, and I don't, you know, we hear of it probably this time of the year, is staff. You know, you can only do so many projects that have to be overseen by staff, and that's a real difficult situation to keep some things going.
And I think we're going to be in a good position going forward because of this reorganization, because before you tended to have the engineers and the planners trying to do the whole CIP project. Not good, not the best use of everybody's expertise. So as you can see with some of the reorganization that Mike and Public Works has done, is the inspection staff and a construction manager are now out in the field implementing, while Stephanie turns her attention to the, the next design item. And then we all have to remember that CIP is not the only thing they're doing, there's comp plans, there's site plan reviews, there's land use. So I think this, over the next year, will start paying dividends, but it's in its one year, one year development.
Yep, last year you started this.
We did start that, and it's just, I mean, the real value, I think, of these pie charts is to just show that there are a lot of staff working on this, but they're also working on a great number of other high priority issues.
Can, when it actually gets down to implementing this, when, when the money is available in fiscal year 2016, how do you decide how you're going to, what your priority is, what you're going to say to the staff? Okay, you're going to do that corner, and you're going to do that corner.
That's where I want to sort of get back to that earlier point of sort of trying to right-size the projects. The CIP should be the thing that sets those priorities in terms of what projects, that in previous years, there's been more money in projects than there is staff to implement them. And that is a sort of a precarious situation, whereas here, it's actually spelled out, so that the projects and the money and the staffing are all sort of lined up to deliver sort of exactly what's scheduled. In terms of who works on which aspect of which project, that comes down to who has expertise and knowledge with what. For example, on the bus shelters, I've been carrying that through preliminary engineering, because I have been responsible for the master plan. But as that transitions to easement acquisition and construction management, that's not what I do, that's why we hire engineers. And so some of these projects, there's just a natural affinity with different staff members, and that just plays out at the staff level.
But that doesn't, that doesn't, that's my question as to what the priority is. Say, if we've got money in there for bus shelters, and we've also got money in the plaza, the multimodal place, who, how do you decide how to allot staff to, and when to allot staff to each of us?
We've taken a team approach, and so we have the representatives here, James Mack, our contracts manager, our grants manager, Jim, and a lot of times it's, is money on the fire list that we're about to lose it, is in the commercial district, is it consistent with council's plan, envision? Well, this is out in procurement, can we work on something else? So it really is, it's not an easy answer, and so we meet monthly to kind of keep track of that, and then...
Well, it just, I think the confusion is, we vote on this, we recommend the CIP, the council votes on the CIP, and then people think that these things are going to happen next week.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to give you this spreadsheet, so you can see what fiscal years indeed the delivery is going to be.
So, my question is, again, about the downtown reinvestment options, water sale proceeds. I noticed that, as far as I can tell, there have only been one set of comments on this, which is Chamber of Commerce.
In the package that you got this evening, there's three. One is the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, and then we now have the...
And the deepest that just came in, and then we have notes from the January 9th meeting, when we met with businesses directly affected in that area. And so Rick Goff captured those comments from those folks. So you have three sets of comments. The, behind the spreadsheet on page 8-28 is a quick synopsis of sort of the three options that staff started with when we started having the community dialogue for improvements on North Washington Street, Broad Street, and then LED streetlight conversions all the way down Broad, which was one of the points that Mr. Thurston was bringing up in terms of the consistency of light intensity and color. So this is our staff's starting point, and we're continuing the dialogue with the input that's been coming in. I know we're going to have a follow-up meeting that Mr. Shills is coordinating with the chamber. And so over time, this will get flushed out in a little more detail. So you're approving a Broad project for that target area and the dollar amount.
Well, I'd just like to see the planning commission have as much input as the Chamber of Commerce. We really haven't commented on these at all. You know, if you decide that the Chamber of Commerce is, you know, there might be looking at different things than we would be looking at, so I'd like to know when, when we're going to get to Commerce.
And we really haven't...
Particularly since we're all from the city, and the chamber isn't necessarily from the city.
But we also have not been, had that much input. But we also have not been, had that much information. It's been meetings that have been outside the planning commission, and so that we've not been part of the conversation.
Certainly, we can come up with a good plan to address that good point. This came up, you know, last fall when there was the walking tour. It's been one of council's initiatives with the allocation of the water sale proceeds. And so this really is at its formative stage, and so staff would be open to what you think would work best to ensure that you had some input. We certainly take that broad point, but if you wanted, you know, some more details, it won't be, more details and opportunities won't happen by next Monday, but they would by the time council adopted it.
Well, even if it were, I mean, you're adopting something, but you're not necessarily, it's not necessarily carved in stone as to what you're going to do. I mean, I think there's some flexibility in this, even if it were after...
Okay. And some may require a site plan, some not, and I think most of it were in our own right-of-way and existing, so it won't require a 2232 or a site plan, but we could certainly work with Mr. Snyder to make sure that we're getting your input as it refines. Mike, did you have something you were going to say?
No, I think the only thing I wanted to note was as you laid out the three options, as you laid out the three alternatives, that those are not necessarily packaged deals. They're very much à la carte and can almost entirely be pull from this, do that, do that, do that, do that. I don't want anyone to look at those, as you can do this one, or that one, or that one.
The timeline looks interesting, though.
They were all intended to be rapidly implemented projects.
Right, right.
Or improvements.
And they do include the...
This is our first time seeing this, so...
Yep. It does include the traffic signals at Washington and Broad. That would be a big chunk of it, actually, to correct those to the city standards, so they all match, as Mr. Thurston called out in his comments.
Yeah, I have a quick question about that. I feel like maybe Jim Snyder mentioned at one point that the city standard is sort of obscenely expensive or something. I mean, do we have a weird standard? And I know it's going to be hard to change the standard, but investing more in a particularly expensive light pole, I don't know. I've never noticed other difference, so I don't really, sorry.
The decorative poles are more expensive, and what the approach that we've, you know, wanted to take is to just implement those at key locations, like the intersection of Broad and Washington, and then develop a new standard for other intersections as it's time for them to be updated. Just a simple black mast arm and traffic, you know, signal pole is our preference, but of course, we would have to make sure that the rest of the community is on board with that.
That sounds good.
They do cost more, and they also have a longer lead time. They have to be produced for us because they're not stocked.
Right. Longer to get installed.
But they were something that was approved when the streetscape...
That's what I was just going to mention.
And this is something that, the look of these is something that we want our city to look like. So I would think that you'd have put a lot of thought into changing them into something else, even though you think they maybe aren't as expensive.
Well, and I, that explanation makes sense. They're saying in key intersections, we'll do the fancy expensive ones, but maybe do more straightforward ones in other locations as they are needed. That sounds smart.
I don't know that staff is certain as to how the two, it's two poles on the south side of Broad ended up being...
That it?
Those two poles are more typical. In other words, not the decorative lights. We're not certain how they ended up that way.
If it was a car accident, we need to pull that out.
Yeah, it might have been that.
So should we have an extra one in storage?
Oh, that was that bad act. I shouldn't laugh, because that was that bad bad act.
We run into a problem with, we just don't have a lot of space to inventory large items.
Keep it in my backyard.
Mm-hmm. And they're such an expensive item, and they're actually specific to each intersection. You need to engineer them based on how long the mast arm is.
But I just want to, just again, stress the approved plan for Broad, that, you know, I've, we've changed a couple of things there, and we've gotten a lot of grief, you know, just for minor little changes. So that approved plan, that needs to be looked at as a whole thing, and everybody agreed to some changes because it's been in place for 25 years or so. And, but I know that I got a lot of grief from tree commission because of a couple of things changed from our, you know, with the raised beds and things like that. So there's a lot of concern by a lot of different groups and a lot of different people about the approved plan being the bible. And thou shalt not mess with it.
And for this particular project, we have no intention of deviating from the approved plan. We're just trying to make it all look consistent and look well-maintained and be, you know, more of a welcoming look for the city.
Right.
I think Stephanie's got exactly the right answer on sort of how do we deal with the existing projects, to the issue of sort of what should the pole standard be going forward. You're absolutely right that there's an adopted policy that says what they ought to look like. As part of the West Broad Street Small Area Plan, staff was intending to take a simultaneously look and bring that up with the planning commission and other boards and commissions about whether it's time to update some of those elements. That, as you said, it's now been in the, the plan's been there for over 25 years. Have standards changed? Have materials changed? Have techniques changed? So is there a small list of things that we can update in that plan and make it the right plan going forward from here?
Absolutely.
I just have one other quick question in case someone asks me, but 115 bucks per brick, that's normal?
Per square foot?
Oh, it says square yard, maybe. Okay, square yard.
Square yard? That's pretty, square yards, good.
Just wanted to make sure I understood, in case someone said, you know, $100 per...
But that would not be good.
Okay, so is everyone okay with then these numbers for the transportation section? Yes. Russ, you noticed you have your traffic comming in there.
I did not notice the traffic.
Yes, there is $200,000 for traffic comming, but it's only one, one year. So the next years aren't funded until, unless there are grants. I know you'll have to go back to your board and discuss that, but they, I think that they're willing to take the one year, right?
Yeah.
And we don't have to worry about the traffic light anymore, Russ. We got that sucker.
Till somebody piles it into it and they have to go buy it and spend it.
Now, you know, as you all go into your deliberations, as I noted in the presentation on February 2nd, we have allocated $5 million in the 11.3 water sale proceeds in this CIP for FY16.
A lot of the...
Five million.
Five million.
And as for the transportation projects, I highlighted this evening in the 313 Park Avenue public parking structure, and then we'll hear about the rest that are under Rexon Park shortly. So the other 5.1 million is left available for future large CIP projects or other recommendations that you all would have. This was sort of set up as partly going to general government and knowing we had some big schools in the out years, having some cash available. Any other questions on transportation for the staff experts that have joined us this evening before we shift to parks and fields?
I just have one question. The light purple in here, is that transportation reprogramming?
Yes.
It looks dark purple further down, so that I...
Yeah, they're supposed to be the same colors, old Excel and new Excel, and I didn't do my paint formatting, probably, but...
That's fine.
That's existing grant money that we're reprogramming to be focused in the areas like we were talking about for South Washington area plan. So it's already appropriated, it's just not in the right project, and so it doesn't impact tax, and many times it's grant funds, but we have to get it to the right project so staff can spend it.
All right, so now we're on public facilities?
No, parks, fields. So Danny and Tom?
You get to go home now?
Come on down, please.
You got to sleep on a cot somewhere, be ready for work tomorrow.
Where did you used to live back in the, on Summerfield? I used to live on Jefferson.
You know that stone house at the corner of Summerfield?
Yeah.
That A-30 stone house.
Yeah, that's a cool house.
Hold on to that, and I'll come back to that and answer that question.
Actually, next door.
Yeah, I know that house, it's a cool house.
Yep. All right, so Paul, Stephanie and Mike, where goes...
They lived on Jefferson next door to us, that's how we know.
That's right. Good.
Old neighborhood.
All of our neighbors live there.
Well, Stephanie and Mike, you're welcome to stay, or you also can go.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Nice meeting you again, Stephanie.
Okay, Mike, go put, put a little...
Welcome aboard.
Right now, okay.
Thank you.
To multi hats.
You don't need to be jiggle.
You avoided these meetings pretty well, good job.
What tab are we in?
Well, Paul's here, Paul's here like every Monday night.
Is there a cot in the CIP?
Paul loves us. Paul loves us.
We do have some shelter in place, cots, really bad for the back, but we got them.
We give them so much grief, it's pitiful.
Okay. So the next, the next subject area would be parks, the high school field turf and the track. And Ms. Tease brought up a question on fire range, so I'll come back to that after we finish this and do public safety. So you have two tabs. Tab six is where the schools did a consolidated one, so their, their write-up for the turf is there, but it's also replicated under tab nine with the Rexon Park ones that Mr. Schlitt provided. And what I was going to...
Start at the beginning.
And...
Like the master plan after the tape.
Okay, so with...
But that's water funded.
Yes. So in tab three, that summary sheet, we can go in that order. That would be perfect.
Right, so tab three?
Yep. Three, three dash two.
Three dash two.
And there's three different color options here that is varied from what the Rexon Park Advisory Board adopted and Danny's recommendation. The FY16 has 100,000, that's water sale proceeds. Then the next three fiscal years are green, and that's only if a funding source is identified because we didn't have adequate capital reserves and cash, and a lot of the projects that Danny can describe are not debt-financable. They need to be cash. However, the FY20 is a large-scale redo of all the trails in the park, and so that was eligible for debt financing, and so that's why you see three different funding mechanisms for that 1.3.
Who said it again? Gosh, I have a question.
This here is just redoing the trails.
So if you look at tab three, three dash two, it gives you a summary of the funding sources under Park Master Planning. And then tab nine gives you the specific project descriptions. So that's a synopsis of the funding and the amount per years. Do you have questions for Danny on the actual projects and what's intended?
I'll just, as everyone said, I, what is the situation with the turf field? Seems to me like a no-brainer. We've got to replace it before it becomes unusable. What do I need to do to make it clear that that's what I want? I mean, that's, that's in the CIP now, right?
And I think that's coming, it's, okay.
Okay, I think everyone's on the same page. I just want to make sure...
You have to be with us on something else.
You're only with me on this if I'm with you on something else? Well, we'll see that.
I'm just joking.
We'll see that. No, I just think it's the most used, however many square yards of land that is in the entire city, and to make it unusable would be totally dumb.
It's the only supersized thing we've got in the city.
I mean, people are out there all the time, aren't they? All the time.
We've got the end zones where the little ones can pl...
I think the only change is that now we have the water funds, so it's been put under water funds since.
Right.
Otherwise, we can't debt finance.
Yeah, that's fine.
We can't debt.
However, we pay for it.
So it's paid for, it's blue, it's probably better paid for than any other colors.
So FY16, so it would be in next year's budget, 450,000. It is water sale proceeds. It's combined with...
Yep.
Yeah, so if we're on the field, I can tell you a little quick synopsis of where things are.
Sorry.
Well, that's okay. And that's, that's good. Tom Horn, the athletic director from the schools, and I have been, you know, kind of working towards this day from the time the first one got built, and we are going to get 10 years out of it, and that's pretty much what we expected from the beginning. And if you kind of take the numbers over time, it's, right now, if we get another 10 years out of the next field and we get it for the number we're looking at, about 450, you're spending about $45,000 a year for a field that gets used five times more than the old one time?
And never turns into a mud pit.
It's anything.
I mean, it's just on and on and on. There was a period in time where the old field would get 75 uses, competitive uses a year out of it, where now we can get 75 in a month if we had that many to do. So really, the project is in, is, is, as you just said, I think, one of the most biggest no-brain...
Yeah, I mean, the stressful thing, of course, is we might not get 10 years out of this one, depending on what happens up there.
Well, exactly.
But I don't think that means we shouldn't do it. No, I don't, I'm just...
So if we get five, it's $90,000 a year, I mean...
That's right. And you're still getting way more than we were in the very beginning. The high school has added sports, we've done things like that.
Well, you have revenue coming in, you rent it out, too, for clubs or not?
It gets rented out a little bit. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that the revenue is such that it makes a difference in really what's going on.
The upper field, the upper field is rented more than...
Yeah, there's a little bit, there's a little bit of rental that goes on through facilities over at the schools, and Tom can probably speak more to those numbers, but I don't know that they're to a point where it, you know, is going to make a difference. I think the reality of it is, is we pretty much got what we expected out of the first product. We got way more than we expected out of what it would do for recreation in parks, and the schools didn't even have some of the programs they had at the time. So we really have taken, as you say, this one large area, and it just gets used and used and used and used, and there really is, I can't think of another, you know, project right now. And we have met that end, too, that we're going to get a football season out of it only because there's a little bit of remediation, a little bit of work that's going to be done, and the work that Tom has already done to make sure that we meet those GMAX tests. And if you want to know more about that, Tom knows a lot more about that. But what's going to happen over time is the field's just going to get harder and harder, and at some point, it's no longer safe to play on. So for anybody that expects that we could get more out of it, we've hit, we've hit it. And getting the next football season in is going to take a little bit of work, but we feel confident that we can do that safely. And then we've got a window between the last football game and the first spring activity to get this done, and we've been told by a contractor that we can, we can ride a contract and...
We don't have to wait until the summertime.
We don't have to wait, and the summertime would be really bad because that's when we are making money off the turf field.
That was brought up during our public comment.
Summer camps.
Saying that after, after football season, it was no longer viable.
Right.
So I, I kept thinking, well, then we had to wait until summer to do it because I didn't know if the money would be available.
But once council adopts it, it'll be available July 1.
And that's really what moved it up from, I think, 17 at one time into 16, or maybe even 18 at one time. We were going to try to stretch it out as far as we could, but that's 16. It really is pretty critical that it happened, the funding become available in July.
Did you see the way that it could do it this summer?
No.
Summer would be a really bad time because of the camps.
I'm just kidding.
Yes, theoretically.
Theoretically, the money's available, and then they can schedule it.
But it seems like after football season's the least used time.
Well, yeah, I mean...
And someone mentioned that maybe these fields actually are giving us all cancer or something.
I was going to ask... They have more comments, they have those higher pieces, I guess.
There's certainly a lot of conversation going on. I am not a scientist, I'm not a doctor, but I've also seen a lot of the work that's going on by the field turf groups that are putting some good work into it and coming up with some real strong defense of the, of the product that's being used. And there was a bill that was underway, and that's already been stopped, and it's not going to stop anybody from installing these fields and things like that. To this point, there's no, there's no...
Particular concern.
There's no proof, there's no real, there's nothing out there that's proving that, you know, there has been some, some issues, and people have started to try to, to put the pieces together and come up with something, but there's been nothing, to my knowledge.
Is there alternate materials, or is it...
Glass.
There's, there's...
Because I have to say, I'm a little concerned because every time, my daughter plays soccer, she plays on our, our big field, but mostly we play on Arlington fields that are the ones down by the airport, they're like along the river. Every time she plays, we end up, all of us have pieces of these black, plastic pieces on...
Bringing that stuff home.
And we're trailing them everywhere, and I have to wonder about the entire environmental impact of having these little plastic pieces going everywhere.
Right. It's, it's a rubber product, and it's actual like tire, ground tire products. So one alternative right now is a Nike shoe, but then again, it's still a rubber product.
It's still rubber, yeah.
Then they've got another product that they've been working on, and Tom was just telling me the University of Arizona has used it, and it's actually cork. Now, the problem you're finding with the, the, the third product, that's completely different than rubber, is that you're adding $3.15 or something like that per square mill yard or whatever.
Yeah, and we should say, cork is not, sorry, cork is not offered as a, as a safer alternative to the rubber. Cork is used in hot environments, desert environments, so it's cooler. It's not sold on the east coast as a, as a viable option because no one would pay more for it. So it's, you know, it's another product that's not tire rubber, but it's not offered as a safer alternative to tire rubber.
And it gets mighty hot down on the field.
I think one of the issues is, is synthetic turf in general is still a fairly new product. We're 15 years from the, the first one that I remember being installed over in Arlington. And so I think there's always going to be some concerns brought forward and some things that will require those manufacturers to do some real legwork and try to figure out what's going on. But you're right, you bring a lot of that stuff home. It's in your shoes. It's in your clothes. It's in everything.
It just gets concerning because when you look at reports, like the Pacific Ocean is just full of plastic, little tiny particles of plastic. And it's just like, I, I would say one thing, at least if it's tire rubber, it's actually, breaks down actually better than the actual plastic.
And I will say this-
They're not at the landfill.
If you're really properly building a natural turf field, in order to keep it hardy and healthy, you're using a lot of chemicals, so. There's, there's some-
And water and-
And, right. So there's some-
I do want to-
A horrible feeling before.
I do want to highlight for you all, the 450,000 in this proposed CIP is for recycled tires. It is not for any more expensive material. So it'd need more money if it was to change.
Right.
And I did want to highlight that the track is concurrently in the CIP for 222,000, also water sales. So that when we're doing the football field, then the track can be redone. So if you have questions of Mr. Horn for the track.
We used to have the worst track in the whole district.
Yeah, I don't want to offer anything, but I'll, I'll give you the background. The track was originally constructed in 2001. It should have been renovated between now and then, but it wasn't quite ready to be renovated the last time we did the turf field, which was 2006. It wasn't old enough to tear it up and start over and spend the money then. So we have lived about two and a half lifetimes of a track refurbished because of the timing of the first track. So you really only get one chance where you don't either disrupt your track or your turf, and you get in, you get that chance to do them together. So, thank you.
Yep. All right, that's good. Moving on.
So then Park Master Plan is the projects that Danny could speak to, and we could also roll in the Howard E. Herman, which is water sale and some debt financing.
Danny, before we get on that, we had someone at the public petition. Tell us that there's a lot of, with the construction at the West End Park, there's a lot of noise-
And light.
And light pollution. And I'm sure that that's because the trees are being cut down and things are being cleared out. And the question was, is some of this foliage, some of this green thing, green things going, are some of them, so that there won't be this light pollution and noise pollution in the neighborhood.
And, and I don't, I can tell you this, that a large portion of the project is replanting. I mean, we're planting thousands and thousands of plants. Now, you typically don't take down a 40-foot tree and, and replace, you replace it, but, so I don't know where things are going to end up on the light pollution. The noise piece, I fully expect it to be a lot louder in that park as we get it finished because there's going to be a lot more people in there. And, and I mean that as a, a little-
I think they were talking about noise from Route 7.
Yeah.
And I was kind of surprised too because of the buildings there and the bridge, you'd think it would kind of muffle, but that's what they were talking about.
So the noise coming from Route 7 is getting now across the park into the neighborhood over there on West?
I, I think low shrubbery will help that.
I think it should certainly help, and there is a lot of, of plantings going in.
So I, I just wanted to let you know what happened earlier. I, I looked at the master plan. Definitely, there's a lot of planning.
And I think the, the petitioner also asked for a communication planted and update, so we could follow up.
The neighbors just wondering where you guys are on it and what's going on. Probably with Howard Herman, it wouldn't hurt to send something out to those neighbors, those neighbors as well. Just so that they know what's going on specifically.
Okay.
That might be a good idea.
And I think the first thing to communicate is Howard Herman is still really a public works project.
Right.
And a tremendous one. It's going to take us a long way to where we want to end up with the recreation and parks in that park. But that one's clearly still a public works project, the, the daylighting of the stream, where West End Park is, is, is a recreation and parks project. So, yeah, we can, we can work on that. And the, there's actually a separate page for the park projects on the website. So we can, we can work with the communications director and, and add some more stuff to that.
Well, maybe with Howard Herman, it could be joint, public works and Rexon Park. I think people, when you get in the middle of the project, they forget the vision of what the end is going to be. It just seems to be taking forever.
Right.
And then it's also like, yikes, look at everything that's being taken down, you know?
Well, what we had done originally was, we had, we had had basically Howard E. Herman, we had all the money at the end to go in and do the work. We realized that once the, the daylighting project began, that we should try to move some of that money up. And we were able to do that last year, the, the current fiscal year we're in. We're doing it again for 16. And what it's doing is, and it's really saving some money because while that company's in there, they can do some of these small pieces that we know we want with the final product. Then the larger amount of money later on will have us kind of tie everything together. But it really was helpful this year, and I'm, I'm already sure it's going to be very helpful next year. We've got, now that there's not a culvert in the ground that we can drive across from Rollins, we're going to have to put a pedestrian bridge. That'll probably be one of the more expensive pieces. But after that, the project itself actually is taking us a long way towards what we envisioned in there. And so we'll, they're going to finish that project this spring, then the advisory board, and we'll have neighborhood meetings and things. And we'll start taking a look and seeing exactly what we want. All along, the idea has been a very natural passive walking path with some nice, maybe educational amenities and things like that. But I think we're well on our way, and that moving those 100,000 was, was a huge help towards that point. And I think the final two-
Forty-eight.
Two forty-eight, thank you, should, should get us to where we want to end up. And that, that's going to be just a really nice park when it's done. And-
He's watching it on his screen.
I know.
How you doing?
And I, and I, what I would, what I would say about the master park implementation money is that we've really struggled over the years. Is it really CIP? Is it really operating maintenance money? And I think with the fact that the, the pay-go money is not going to be available, and the, and we all go through different times, and it kind of hurts to know that that money's not going to be there, but I think it's going to give, and the advisory board has had some conversation about it, it's going to give us an opportunity. And one thing they've realized is that by virtue of basically an accident, Lincoln Park turned out really nice, and it was a full project at one time. Then we're able to put together a whole master park implementation at West End Park, and now we're doing it at Howard E. Herman. So I think where we'll move and what you'll see in the future is that we'll start taking the entire park, putting it in as a separate CIP plan, do, and attacking it as a whole plan, where the improvement money for all the years, we kept thinking that, okay, it's not fair to do one at a time, and let's do bits and pieces. But then it really became a little bit more operation, a little bit more maintenance. So it has been difficult. So with some sad news that we're, we're going to have to potentially forego a few years of stuff, we'll be able to put together some nice plans, get after Big Chimneys Park from start to finish, get after, you know, go back into Cherry Hill Park. It'll be time real soon to really get that park back up and, and, you know, so do these parks at one time. So that's what I would say about the opportunity we have now with the master park money.
Would you guys plan for FY 2016 at 100,000?
Well, that-
Not a lot of money, I guess.
Yeah, and, and at one time, what we really had planned for that was the playground equipment in Cherry Hill. And there's a lot that needs to be done in there. I don't know that we have enough funding to do that. So there's still some places where back in 2006, 2007, when everything was wiped out, that we haven't caught up. We've been very fortunate this year to get the tennis courts over at Cavalier Trail, all the basketball courts, outdoor basketball courts taken care of finally, something that we've been desperately needing. And with the completion of Jesse Thackeray School and the Stormwater Project coming very soon, we're going to get all of our court surfaces back in place. I think some of that money's going to end up being used to complete those projects, get some of the little pieces of equipment that we've kind of let go. That 100,000 probably is not going to result in one large project. You're going, it's going to be bits and pieces here and there.
And then, I mean, because eventually, like, there's definitely trail issues in, in quite a few parks as well.
And that's where you go to six, I'm sorry, 20, and the money that's still left right now, it, it is still there in 20. We went through and measured all of our asphalt pathways through the parks and all of that. And that's a fairly expensive project, but one that is going, is already sorely needed. So if we can hold on till 20, it's going to be really badly needed, and we need to get in and do something. And it'd be real nice to find a pervious surface, that we haven't really found the perfect product yet. But that's going to be a, a big undertaking, and that's going to be a project that's going to be needed badly. But by that time, we're going to have the opportunity to know that we've got exactly what we're going to have in Lincoln Park for a period of time, what we're going to have in West End Park, so Howard E. Herman, so some of those places, we're going to have a clearer understanding of what we should replace and where we should be putting it.
When I, I think the trails and crosbsen work pretty well, and they're not asphalt. They're just like built-up gravel.
Yeah, it's, it's the crush, the, the stone dust.
Right.
And they do work well. They're a little, they're quite a bit more on the maintenance side, but that's part of the give and take on a pervious versus impervious.
But it's a, it's a nice surface, and it works really well.
Unless it rains.
And asphalt, you don't have it breaking off on the edges like the asphalt does.
Right.
You know, but, but it, it actually-
Freezing and cracking.
And, and just so I know, because people might ask me this too, so does that mean maybe Cherry Hill would be the 100K in 2017 or the 300K in 2018, or we don't know?
Well, right now, the 2017, 2018, 2019, the green shaded money is-
No money.
Not available. It's not there. It's, there's a number there, but there's, there's none there unless we find some kind of a, you know, a, a grant or some, some other, some other way to fund.
We need to get someone to crash a car all the way into the-
All the way into Cherry Hill, if you get anybody.
Out of all those trees and-
Helicopter.
Take out. All right, but so, so there's no plans for the-
But Danny, there's been some questions asked about doing a, a new master plan for some of the parks that we haven't been done yet.
Thank you for asking that. Here's, here's something that the advisory board spent a lot of time on. And you know, you were part of this, and, and Ruth, you were part of this. The master park plans were not something that people sat down in in 10 minutes and put out. It was a long, long, years of process that Mr. Herman went through. What we've determined is that we should go back and do every master park right before we're ready to get into that project. So if we know we've got an upcoming project, sit down and start working with the public and come up with the master plans. Even West End Park was a long involved process, but from the time we started the site plan till we started construction, you probably had a number of, you know, there's a number of new neighbors and things like that. And we've had a lot of questions, and we've worked with the public to try to, try to make sure we're going through that process. So that was, that, I'm glad you asked that. But what the advisory board has discussed and has recommended to staff is that we're not going to go back and just do a master park redo just because. We're going to wait until we know that we've got something on the horizon, or at least talking about something on the horizon. Go back in, work with the neighbors, redo the master-
Big chimney.
Yeah.
Everything in the world changed over there now.
Sure.
And then where's that $50,000 sitting?
Well, Big Chimneys is on here for-
It's, it's on here for discussion.
Oh, I know. But I was just also thinking, where's that, got that one proper?
Right. And Cindy probably-
I think, was that the Atlantic Realty City Center 50,000?
No.
I think it was.
With the Rush Mark. Rush Mark. It was, what, wasn't it 100,000 total for traffic and/or park or something like that?
It was actually, yeah.
They need to do a study, and then depending on the results of that, that's when the million dollars in blue here would kick in. And that million dollar in blue is not water sale proceeds. That's actually the city's share of the sale of the land for the Harris Teeter project. Reinvesting it back into transportation or Big Chimneys depending on which is the biggest deed after the project's operational.
So, say that again, the 2018 blue for Big Chimneys is not water sale projects, it's?
It's the proceeds for the sale of the land for the post office.
So it's not water sale?
Yeah, but it's more-
It's the city's half, not the EDAs half.
Well, I, I-
Not quite 50/50, but it's close.
I think you're right to wait and, and update those master park plans, like when you're closer. But the good thing is, a lot of work went into them, and so you have documents that are pretty strong to update. It's not like you're starting from zero.
Right. Not starting from scratch, but-
I agree.
A lot of the stuff in them, if you read it, it's still very, very valid. You just have to run it through the neighborhood again and get them to start thinking about it again. And it's kind of like with West End. I know that when people realized it was, there was a skate park going in, a lot of people weren't-
Skate feature.
Feature, 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 feature. I know that there was some people who were like, we had no idea that was going in because it, or even if they had been involved, it was a long time ago, but.
Thank you. I think, I think you're right. The, the plans initially that were, that we adopted were good plans. There will be some pieces that change, and I think Lindy mentioned it. Big Chimneys, there'll be a lot of changes. But I think there's going to be a lot of things that we say, oh, this still makes sense, you know?
Not right.
Opening it up, you know, obviously, we're wet. We're going to have to, there's going to be a lot of engineering work, a lot of things. But I think you're right.
I think 75% of all those plans stand because it, but it's the, it was the process that the neighborhood got to be part of-
Right.
That made them really strong. And so when you have a plan that was done so long ago, they just, but you'll go through it again, and a lot of it will stand, I think. Because most of it was real common sense, things that make sense for those specific parks.
But that's going to be the next, Big Chimneys is going to be next in line, or?
I, I don't know the answer to that right now. I'm real excited about getting West End Park completed and Howard E. Herman completed. And that takes us, we're, we're a few years away from now at that point. And once we get there, I'll be real excited about the next park, and I don't know. Big Chimneys is certainly, should be very high on the list in, in my mind.
Because it's useless as it is.
But it's been a real difficult park. It's been a little bit held hostage by all the different potential developments that were going to take place. So every time one would come up, we'd say, oh, well, now Big Chimneys is going to be the best park in the city. And then that project would kind of fall apart, and, and then the next one. So now we finally got some stuff over there.
It might be something that comes down the-
Yeah.
Well, let me just say, I used to live in that neighborhood, and it's not useless. My son and I went there almost every day.
Well, good.
I just don't like the mosquitoes.
You know what? With kids, some equipment and a few trees can be very useful.
Right.
Mosquitoes.
It's got a lot of potential.
Yeah.
Just take care of this, Randy.
Agreement on this one, unless you think that there's something-
I'm not here to give any recommendations for changes.
I think we're cool.
Thank you both for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
We're on for tomorrow night? Tom? Everything going as planned for tomorrow night?
We won't know until the morning when other divisions decide whether they're going to school or not.
Who are we, who are we supposed to play?
Girls in Madison County.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's pretty far away.
The girls in Madison, but aren't we, don't we have a home boys' game?
Not anymore, because no one played tonight.
Oh, okay, well, it's good. Thank you for telling me I don't have anything to do tomorrow night.
Well, you might. We have a girls' home game.
You can go home and take a shower.
Oh, girls' home game.
You could go home and take a shower.
Only if the water line gets fixed. But actually, the water is turned back on, so my basement is full of water again. But at least we can flush toilets and take showers and wash clothes.
I hope you didn't have all those-
Certain things are important. So Chair, if you would, I'd like to do the firing rage to answer Ms. Tease's question.
That's a good idea. I just feel bad that they-
So I don't, I'm not totally stinky or anything. I just want people to know that.
Just has a lot of water sitting. So under tab five is the public safety firing rage in partnership with Fairfax City. And so there was questions about this in terms of the cost and the need. And of course, it is much higher than what it was last year, the CIP, because it was 300,000 is what council approved based on your all's recommendation. Well, it was only, it was only 300,000 and not, you know, 1.2, so it's, it's a, a, a big delta. Part of that-
Where do you get through 1.2? I'm only seeing nine.
If you go back to the second page. And we already had 300,000 in FY 15.
So it's all building, that's all we've already done. I guess, I mean, I guess-
So what's the total now?
They haven't used that money yet.
No, they haven't, because Fairfax City has still been doing the design of the firing rage now. It would be very cost prohibitive for us to do our own firing rage, so we've always partnered for a long time with Fairfax City. The facility is old, and so they need to replace it, and so they were doing some design work. And then partnering, it's our police, our sheriffs, Fairfax City.
Fire marshal.
The fire marshal. And George Mason University was hopefully going to join in, and they have a large police force, so it was going to reduce costs. With state budget cuts, they've not joined again. In the meantime, since this was presented, both Chief Gavin and City Manager- In the meantime, since this was presented, both Chief Gavin and City Manager Shields have been working with Fairfax City to maybe more right size and right design, the firing range, so that it was functional about the goals, but not be gold plated. So we are anticipating the cost would come down and what, but we don't have that yet. So what you would have, when you approve this, is the FY15 money already approved, FY16, so there'd be 600,000. The other dollar amounts would just be planning that we certainly hope would be much lower, that's our plan. We have, the police did go look and see if there's other alternatives, like using a private range. And part of the problem is you don't have control over scheduling. And if an officer needs to go back the second day to retest, you may not get that scheduled. And if he doesn't pass and he's not on the, about his recertification, he's not on the streets, we lose an officer on the street. And a lot of the firing ranges, I've learned, allow you to shoot front and back, but when we're training SWAT, they need to go lateral. And they're not set up for you to be shooting left and right when people are standing next to you.
Do you use SWAT in the city?
Yes, we have. Like on Hillwood when we had the.
Hillwood, yeah.
And Eden Center, there's been some times. So the, the training facilities are adequate for the certification, the scheduling, the drive time to get to any of them. It just, it, it's cost more in the long run because of the lost time.
It's typically located, is this one we're currently using?
It's, we're currently using. It's in Fairfax City, their maintenance facility, lot by picket.
Oh, okay. So.
Pictures of it. I should use them since I brought them.
Oh, yeah, you brought a citrus.
I brought the ones from the.
That's one of the things that I could see dropped, I mean, I don't.
Well, I just wanted to have a public discussion about it because we were hearing from citizens, like it seemed like a lot of money for a shooting range, so.
Yep. So it's training for certification. So it's on Pickett Road, it's.
Oh, okay.
It looks like a little siding shack.
Now, do we currently pay a fee to use that?
Yes, we have operating costs.
If we don't help them fund something new, they'd still let us use it for, right? I mean, they're not gonna get mad and say we can't use it.
Yeah, at this point, but it's 26 years old and so it's starting to have a lot more maintenance costs, so the trade-off would probably be what we have to pay and maintenance would go up.
Because they wouldn't do it unless we can help.
So we're having some serious negotiations since this last one. You can see us right in the middle of their. So it's conveniently located, it's actually in a flood plain, there's not a lot of residential development around it. And a lot of the other Fairfax County and Alexandria firing ranges are totally booked in full, so we can't get into them. So limited choices, but necessary for certification of the officers.
Do you, do you know, so let's say we build this and then down the road, George Mason or some other entity wants to use the thing and, and revenue could be generated, is there agreements in place that we get some share of that since we're footing?
That's currently under negotiations, but the intent is that we pay our pro-rata share based on number of officers and deputies. And so one, you need the overall cost down because our pro-rata share goes down, but if other officers or localities grew, then it would change. So we're building that into the agreements, but it's currently under development.
Well, are they, are they thinking they're gonna use the 300 from 2015 CIP immediately? Or could we move it into 2016 and then move the rest of it out?
Well, it's already been appropriated and the bonds issued. And our goal is to get our share down to about the 600, about 50% less than what Fairfax City had proposed.
So what does that mean as far as these numbers?
Because we don't have anything more definitive, we've left it in there for 1.2 million. And you'd be appropriating FY16 money and the other four would be planning dollar amounts. So there'd actually be 600,000 budgeted.
So what we're.
Unless you wish to make a change, and I would have the sheriff, sheriff but the chief come and talk to you about the cost ramifications.
I can't imagine that they would be able to make a better case than you've just made.
I'm, I'm sharing exactly what I was.
So what we have here is our worst-case scenario.
Yes.
That they have the 300, we already have funded, that the additional 300 for 16, and that the 17 and 18, we're hoping won't happen, but it's there in case that's, because I guess in the end, we have to have this training facility available. Okay.
And, and we expect to get another 25 years out of this new one?
Yeah, we want them not to value engineer it down, but they had second floors, they had also, you know, twice as many lanes, and we're saying, let's get to, you know, a realistic number.
And speaking of value engineering, fire station, when are we ever gonna catch up with that?
The, we've worked it out with Arlington under the new contract and Mike Collins and I've met with them twice. And so they are currently got contracts out or procurement on the 788,000, that's already been approved to start on the doors, the windows, in an HVAC study. And you do see it here that Arlington is adding additional money to catch up on the building, on HVAC and sewer and other things that they have found. We are, for FY16, we feel comfortable with their dollar amount, but the other numbers are just planning numbers and they don't really know the facility. And so Mike's asked them to do a deeper dive into their cost estimates, because the costs are much higher than ours would have been for two reasons. One, they don't know the building. And two, under Arlington's model, all the staff costs, project costs get charged to the project. So this jumps up for, for the Arlington staff.
You know, it's something that, you know, when we're going into building new buildings and everything like that, that value engineering situation just creates so many problems in the future. And I hope it's not gonna happen at Mount Daniel.
Yeah, you can see it there, it's not great, but that's where the doors hang up as they go up. Because they put the heating unit right behind it, so it scrapes the heating every time it opens the door.
The last renovation of Mason was value engineered to death and crummy, crummy products were put in. And I wish we could have some sort of oversight on that type of situation, because it's pitiful.
So basically, we kinda have the same situation going on here with the fire station. So we have these amounts in here, we're not sure if they're gonna be final in the out years, we're hoping it actually will be much less than this. But right now, your recommendation is that we leave the money in place because we don't know for sure what's gonna happen with these negotiations.
Correct.
Okay.
And I also wanted them in here so you could see the, because our debt finance, the impact on the policies.
And what about the windows and everything? Are those done?
That's what's under procurement now.
Okay.
So the windows are under procurement and in the process of being installed. For the doors, Arlington County has changed what doors are using. Instead of the overhead pull-up ones, they're going the bifold, because they find they have lower maintenance in the long run.
Right.
But they're sort of, like our earlier conversation, they're twice as the price. And so we're negotiating back with them. They're red, they're pretty, they look like fire station doors, but you know, the money that's approved, we'd only be able to do one side of the building. We need to do the doors going in and out. So this is an interesting partnership and we're the first year where the city funds the capital and they fund the maintenance. So of course, if the capital is done and the infrastructure is good, their maintenance costs go down, but it's a high cost for us on the front end, so we're still negotiating some of those nuances.
I think it might be better to share those, both sides.
So that's the fire range, Rex Park Fields Transportation. So the last thing that I had proposed for your agenda this evening is to talk a little bit about changes or directions that you wanna give me in terms of this CIP.
Well, I'll tell you mine right off the bat. I'd like to see the library moved up, for one thing, because it's water sale proceeds and I don't see why we can't spend it sooner rather than later.
That would be the parking structure.
Parking structure, right.
Parking structure.
Because we need it regardless of what goes on with the library.
Thank you, Deborah.
You know, because one thing about it is we need that parking regardless of what happens with the library. And we need it now for the library.
Right.
But I know there's, there's a lot of public concern about, you know, the breakdown and it seems like it's very costly to them and it's hard, hard to explain it to people.
Hard to explain what?
The, because they've broken it down just using the second deck figures.
Well, okay, and that brings me to my second question. I noticed in the, in the city renovations, the city hall renovations, we're talking about a, a parking deck second level, which is only $750,000. Is it that much smaller? Why, why the big price discrepancy there?
The, the city hall second floor is about 45 spaces versus 55. In the already approved money, the first floor secured parking has been budgeted for city hall. And so by adding a second story, we've already done the foundation, so that's part of your cost savings.
Okay, and can you give me, and just a general guess, I'm sure you know the exact figures of what the, the money that's already been budgeted?
It's 1.2 billion. So the Park Avenue public parking does come out more costly per space than city halls does. Part of that's the elevation and grade and we have to totally tear that down and rebuild it. But I had the cost estimators put in their structural foundation so we could add a floor later, so that increases your structural. And then more brick, because it's in the official design and it's in between two brick buildings, so wanted it to blend in.
Should be extra landscaping and everything because it's.
Yep, and then stare out the back so that it could, you know, be public parking for Broaddale or the pediatrician, since we're saying this is public parking.
I don't think we oughta let Broaddale over there.
To be clear, if it's public parking and it's public parking, there's a financial deal that still has to be discussed. This is all assuming the city's doing it, because that's all I could propose right now. But if it's, we'd be partnering with 313 Park Avenue, obviously the library, but if it's gonna be public parking for other uses, then there needs to be either capital investment or ongoing maintenance agreement.
Well, it's also, but it's also for our citizens who currently, the ones who get towed for Broaddale often say that they're.
Yeah.
Parking in Broaddale, going to the library.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think.
And we keep saying, gonna go to Starbucks, first, then the library.
Well, I think if we build, even then, you get towed, I think if we, if we invest in parking there, absolutely has to be something that you can park and go to the library and get your Starbucks and do whatever you want. So however that, you know, it's gotta, it can't just be for the library.
That's why I've been calling, it's listed here as a public parking garage. That benefits the library, but it's not library parking.
I think this is essential, I think it's timely, I think we should move it up.
Well, you know, the thing about it is it's also parking for someone who wants to go to Starbucks in the park. Because, because if you were to park in Starbucks and go to Starbucks and then leave your car there, you could get towed right then, so.
But is that gonna allow for another deck just in case? Structurally?
The dollar amount here is, is designed to allow for structural support, to have another deck in the future.
So on both parking structures, we could have another?
Definitely for 313 public parking. Here at city hall, because of the elevation and not wanting to tower over the farmhouse and the community center, I did a plan to go taller than city hall.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think that makes sense aesthetically and.
And so, and so what we're talking about here is should we move up the Park Avenue parking to earlier years?
Exactly. And it's funny, Ruth, I have the same note here, I have myself going this way with it, because I thought the same thing, that, that regardless of if the library gets bigger or is renovated or not.
We need the parking.
Yeah, we've been talking about downtown parking for 10 and so years I've been on the planning commission.
And nothing's ever been done except for, you know, getting the deal with Kaiser.
Which is a good deal, but, but Kaiser doesn't help people who wanna be over that way.
No.
What fiscal year are you thinking, FY17 or 16?
That's what I had it going to 17. I don't know what Ruth feels.
Yeah, I, I would even move, move up the, because the $1,000 is what, for the planning?
Million.
That's the A and E.
A million.
Yes, million. Wish it was only a thousand.
I'd look at it in terms of my own spending, so $1,000 was a lot.
I put it on 17, because I didn't know if we could move to 16 and have the staff in to jump on that project. So I think, to me, that's a staffing issue.
Plus, I assume there's still a decent amount of details to work out with the owners.
Yeah, so I, I love 17 would be fine with me.
Yeah, I was gonna say FY17 is probably reasonable because of all the other.
The summer of 2016.
Parking arrangements.
2016 is what?
July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016. So FY17 is.
It would be just a few months from now.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll.
To 17.
Move back, yeah.
Also for strategically, all of the debt we're issuing.
That would be 17 and 18.
We're, we're gonna issue some debt at 16, but doing it at the end of the fiscal year. And because of the accounting rules, we could reimburse ourselves 18 months, so we can spend now and go back 18 months. So we're trying to delay issuing debt, so it doesn't impact the tax rate and let all the new development come on. So moving it to 16 would be a problem, because we wouldn't be able to afford the debt at FY16.
If we can move it to 17, that would be nice.
Do you want it combined? I split it just because of the, the natural flow of issuing bonds, so I could do 17 for the million and the 2.5 for 18.
Yeah.
Just up it by one year. Okay?
I mean, I assume you split it because you needed it split.
Yeah.
I'll leave that alone.
And, okay, the other change, I mean, not change, the other question, and I would like to see it changed, if possible, is the $5 million that's kind of sneaked in here for Mary Ellen Henderson. I don't remember that being here last year.
It was there, but I think we mostly focused on the high school. A lot of our presentations, you'll see 104 million, and that's the combination.
I presented data that showed that Mary Ellen Henderson is okay right now, but that it is on its way to being not big enough.
Oh, so that's for?
Expansion.
Expansion.
Right, because I don't know if you guys remember, I was talking about last year, I was trying to figure out where would they add on, because it's awkward to add on to the back when the cafeteria entrance is on the back. You can't do it on the drive aisle side or in the front, and, and they can't do it on the gym side, because the gym is underground there. So I, I really questioned, they didn't really build that school to be added on to easily.
It's to, I believe it's to add 10 classrooms and also to renovate the cafeteria to make the music classrooms and area of the stage much more functional.
They were gonna, they were gonna switch them or do something like that, because it's really awkward.
And it's concurrent with the high school, because we think it'll be the same group doing...
Well, yeah, that seems logical. I would like to see that move out, though, to 2018 earliest.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, I don't think the high school, or if MEH is gonna be done with the high school, they're not gonna be ready in 17.
Right.
They're just not, and I think we could easily move it to 18, but I don't know if it, I don't know if it makes a difference, because...
Well, and remember, this is only if there's a financing plan, and we've, we've had that conversation, the project costs versus...
Right, I understand that, but still, it, it's, it's public perception that we have to fight with, you know, if, if the earlier this is in there, the earlier the public thinks it's gonna be built, and I think that that's a lie.
Well, I, I mean, I would be comfortable moving it to 18, I mean, because 17 is really saying that they're gonna be ready to build something a year and a half from now.
And that's, no way.
And they're not.
And that, and frankly, MEH should probably be, it'll have to be done along with the high school.
I think the plan is to do it concurrently, because one, you need to know where the high school's gonna end up, and the redevelopment, and then your parking structures and everything.
Well, no, it makes sense too, construction cost-wise, you already have people working on construction, and a 10-classroom addition is a very small project. I, I still question how they're gonna do it with the pods, the way they're set up, I don't know how they're gonna make this work. But that school was not set up to be added on to.
I know.
Well, I mean, and, and that's the key here, I think, is that, this is, this is so nebulous, it's, it's just so vague, that, that by the time that they get a, an RFP, then, and that's gonna take a while, and then, then they start with design.
Shouldn't it be just luck with that massive number that we don't deal with?
What, 104?
Yeah.
That's basically what it is, because it's in pink, so it's a matter of what, what you all want to message and have as a policy in terms of the timing and the coordination with the economic development. Clearly, we don't have an answer as to how it's gonna be financed yet.
That's right, and the thing is that if, it depends on how much we can sell that land for, and it could be at some point, that this won't be 99,000, it'll be 59,000 or it'll be 60,000, and...
Million.
I mean, million, sorry.
99,000, I'll raise the money tomorrow.
We all wish it was 1,000. But I guess the issue, the time in here is...
I've never seen such big numbers in my checking accounts.
Watch those commas and zeros.
Yes, in, in tab six, you have the school board's adopted CIP, and this, this is presented to you as their timing.
So this is what the school board adopted, I don't know...
Now, last year, you changed what they adopted and pushed it out by one year, so I will just make sure to tell the superintendent tomorrow if that's what your direction is.
So, I just wanna, uh, I'm, it seems like I may be outnumbered on this, but I would
say, if, if the schools want it in a certain year, and they, they, I guess, think they can do it, I understand Ruth's concern that, I guess, I don't know, the public, I, I have a lot of people talking to me about, why are we waiting on the high school, why aren't we doing this faster? I understand, I understand we have...
If you don't have the money for it right now, and we won't have it in...
Okay, we're not gonna have the, we're not gonna have the money a year later either, so I just, my point, my point is, I'm getting, I understand you're getting certain feedback from people, I'm getting feedback from people. I think if it's not ready to go, it won't happen, if we don't have the money, I guess it won't happen. I, to me, I, I guess I don't understand the value in pushing it back by a year. At this point, if the school board thinks that they could use it in this year, I'd like us to be ready to be able to do it. Obviously, if we're not ready next year, we'd push it back.
But this, and the pink there is not funded, I mean, it's not for real.
Right, so why not, why move it? It's not funded.
Because it's a public perspec, perception, and, and I think we should be realistic, and...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, well, I guess I don't know, I guess I'd like to have more, before I'd be willing to push it back, I'd like to have more expert opinion from, no offense, experts, to tell me why it can't happen in, in 2017.
Even the, even the schools say it can't happen, then.
Why are they requesting it?
This, I think the school board requested it because it keeps it front and center in the community's conversation, and it keeps the pressure on to keep things moving.
Exactly, and that's my sort of point, is I think that we, I think it's the wrong message to just keep kicking this can down the road.
And I'm fine leaving it where it is, and that's why I brought up the fact that this was the adopted CIP from the school board, and that that's where they would really like it, and the fact is, because it's in pink, it doesn't really matter to me where it is, because it, it, it won't happen until there's a financing plan. So if we want to leave it there, I'm, I'm comfortable with leaving it wherever it is.
Right, and I guess, I, it's interesting, because I'm, I understand Ruth's perspective, and I appreciate that, I just think I have the opposite sort of feeling. I want it to be front and center, I want us to feel like, oh, yeah, it's in 2017, it's coming up, we better get this financing plan figured out. Whether that actually affects how fast that happens, probably not, but I, I, when I talk to my neighbors and I'm at the bus stop, stuff like that, I, you know, the challenge I have is people stress that we're never gonna actually get around to making this happen, so I'd love to be able to say, hey, we're pushing it as fast as we can, maybe we're not gonna be able to make this date, but that's what, that's what the school's trying to do, and I wanna, I wanna support them, but, and I would say, hey, it apparently doesn't even matter, because it's pink.
It, it doesn't matter, because the number is just a placeholder. I mean, 99 million is just, it doesn't, I don't care what font it's in, it's just, it's not a meaningful number, that's, that's, we could not afford 99 million, 500,000.
We couldn't afford it in 2026.
Well, it's a meaningful number, in that that's how much it's gonna cost to build a high school.
We don't know that.
No, but it's not gonna cost, it's not gonna cost half that.
Well...
But Falls Churches doesn't have to come up with all of that money.
Well, the city's, well, think of it this way, if we can get a developer to put in a bunch of money, we could also get the developer to put in a bunch of money and do something else. I mean, the fact of the matter is, a building that we need for, for the number of kids we expect is gonna cost roughly that amount of money. That's an actual, somebody's gonna be writing checks, where that money comes from, I don't know, but that's just, that's just the reality of the world. I mean, to me, there's no alternative, what's the alternative, we're just not gonna have a high school?
Nobody's saying that, nobody's saying that at all.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm saying to Russ's point, that I think it's gonna cost 100 million dollars, clearly, we're gonna get some economic development happening up there to cover some of that, nobody knows when that's gonna happen, the schools seem to want to have it in 2017, that seems reasonable to me, that's sort of my stance.
People aren't gonna understand that it's, it's in pink, they're just gonna think, it's in there.
Okay, well, I think, well, this is something that we're gonna have to take a vote on, you're, you're either gonna leave it there, or you're gonna move it, and then we're gonna have to vote as to, as to whether we're gonna recommend it.
We should talk to the sc...
Well, the, the school board dollar about hasn't changed for the last couple of years, and Dr. Jones has described that for you all in terms of, they know how many classrooms they need, and they have a set square footage, so it's a, a straight math formula right now, when they actually issue the RFP and get, uh, design proposals in or PPA, whichever way, it's gonna go up and down some, but it's not gonna be below 80,000, and hopefully it's not higher. But, to your points, it really will be dependent on the financing plan, and the timing of that is really complex, because even if you just look at the front end right now, you need to get the RFP out there for the consulting services, and that's just to help get you to the next stage, and then to request for information for developers, and then, then you still have to actually design the school and fund it, and the chances of the economic development and the school's timing aligning is very challenging. So, if the schools really need to happen sooner than later, you're really, the city has to figure out how to do a revenue bond and hope that we could pay it off early 10 years down when the build-out happens, or the school way, so that's the complexity in, as Dr. Jones said when she was here, when we're doing facilities, it's just too early to know right now. So it really is a policy decision which way the majority of the planning commission wants to go for the vote. Last year, you had the same discussion, and we had a separate motion, and so that, I kept it in there for that timing, because you had some question about that earl, on our first work session. So that's an option, is that I could break it out for you all, and you could see where the majority vote lands for which year it goes in.
Well, it's an enormous number, but on a lot of the other projects, the way it's typically structured is, you have some money that's available to begin the process, begin the, um, the A and E sort of work and, and do the investiga, in this case, it's just one big number.
Lot.
And so, um, in previous conversations, it sounds like this number's not, for a variety of reasons, is just put in as one big lump sum. I, I think it's really probably not going to happen until FY18, but if there's some money that's needed for the school board to move this along, if there's a way to break it up so they have money available, if they need it for the preliminary work, I'm okay with that.
There is some, there is some money in there, in this CIP, in a different area. Here it is, isn't it?
It's green, though, if you're looking at the boundary line adjustment money.
Yes, but it, but aren't they asking for 250,000 for, um, any consultants that they need coming up? I mean, they had 250,000 dollars.
Yeah, the joint steering committee has the 250,000.
The joint steering committee had 250,000, and, um, when Justin called me this afternoon to ask me what we were gonna do here, I said, well, I, I think it would be good to know how much of the 250,000 dollars is left.
How do you get, how do they even get to 250? It's great.
It was unclear.
Last year, last year, they got 250 last year.
No, but this one's, this one's grand.
It wasn't in the CIP, it was just given to them.
But she's saying, she's asking, what's the balance on the 250 they got last year?
What's the balance on the 250? And so, um, Justin called Tony, and Tony told him that, um, 35,000 dollars went to the first consultant, RTLK or whatever it is, I can't see it from here, and then 60,000 dollars went for the ULITAP program, and I asked Jim tonight if, I said, I thought that, that was free, I mean, I, except for some incidental, incidental expenses, and he said, that's right, they were, um, they volunteered their time. So where they're getting 60,000 for that program, I don't know. And then there were some other expenses for another consultant, and the, the answer was, that money will practically be gone, so they're gonna need another 250,000, and that 250 was gonna come from, this is what Justin told me, 250 was gonna come from the CIP, and 250 was gonna come from, or maybe it's 125 was gonna come from the CIP, and 125 was gonna come from the city. Now, I, I said, we don't, I mean, we don't fund 125,000 dollars.
Well, the school board adopted it as 250,000 in FY16, it is not in the CIP, and you see it's green, because it's not eligible for CIP.
It's not funded, yes.
It is a planning study, and by accounting rules, it cannot be in the CIP. Last year, the 250 ended up in the CIP, because it came in too late, and it was the only place there was money, and so we need to keep the ball rolling. So, this is not in the CIP, and either the school board or council will need to find it in operating budget. I, I haven't been part of the joint steering committee, so I haven't heard of a shared split.
Well, we, we weren't, I, I didn't hear that at the joint steering committee, I heard that today from Justin when he called me, so, you know...
So I can confirm how much money has been spent, but this planning money, going back to Russ's question, is not A and E in design on a high school or the middle school. So, one could split that up, as we have on the other projects, and do some A and E in the, the construction, and at one point, my staff version, two years back, not the school board, split it in three years, because you would also not do all the construction in one fiscal year, it's a 24-month project. The school board intentionally put it in one year, as I understand it, so that the project costs would be totaled for referendum education, so everybody would know the cost of the project. How you budget it, however, is, doesn't have to be how you put the total project costs out for the referendum.
Well, Russ, what were you thinking, putting a couple million, a couple million out there for...
Yeah, right, I mean...
But I don't think they're even ready to design.
Uh, I don't think there are either, and I tend to agree with your timeline on this, but if, the idea is to keep it both front and center, and allow the school board access to money, if in fact they can pull it off, I, I want them to have money to begin that sort of, well, that A and E work, I mean, I, I don't want, I don't, I don't want the process to be slowed because of where we put the money, or where it was previously budgeted, but if you have a few million dollars, or whatever the reasonable estimate is, so that there's a big carrot out there, hey, let's get this moving, and there'll be money available to do the first step. I, I don't even have any guess out of 99.5, what money you would need to start that work, I don't know, is that 10% of the budget, or...
Well, A and E is at least 5%.
So I'm, I'm, I mean, these are meaningless numbers to me, for many reasons I've said over the last several weeks, but if you want to put 9 million dollars in, in 2017 to sort of say, it's ready for you, if you can meet this deadline, and, and meet all the things you need to do, including referendums and financing plans, then we're agreeable to that. I don't want to be the rake on that, I don't want the CIP to be it, but it's in pink, and I have no reason to believe we'll make it in time.
But also, that can't be, how would that fit into the budget?
Because it's pink, I'm not calculating it against the debt service, because there's no funding associated with it.
Can I ask a technical question related to what you said before about the, which is fine, it makes sense to me, but the, that 250 planning money, you said, can't be in the CIP anyway, because it's, doesn't qualify, but like, like we just got to talk about, the fields don't qualify either, so, and they're in blue, but, so are they not technically in the CIP?
They are in the CIP, they're not eligible for debt financing, so they had to be cash, but the, the project itself is eligible.
Okay, but like a planning isn't even eligible for CIP?
That's been accounting change, so you can't do feasibility studies and planning documents in your CIP. So in the past, we had done city hall feasibility study, and the library came out, but that's accounting-wise, that's not allowed under GASP anymore.
Yeah.
Now, just as a refresher, I did give you, based on your all's request, there's a not recommended all-in school plan, so you could see what 104 million did to the debt policies.
Right, you put that big time in there.
Yeah, so that is there, but it, it just reinforces the conversation you all have been having, that, you know, at minimum, we can only afford 50% of that project cost city financed.
And again, we just have to put up with people saying, but it's in there, we'll say, it's in pink.
They're welcome to come to all these meetings if they like.
Basically, I, I'm comfortable, because it is in pink anyway, to leave it in 17 or to move it to 18, I think it's all just kind of, it's still all up in the air.
It's like, you know, really?
Yeah, well, I just, you know, it's kind of like Ruth says, by putting it in 17, people really think in a year and a half, we could possibly be working on this, but I...
I think one of the things that we need to do, we all need to do, is, is go through and read these comments, and see what people, other than the people at your bus stop and in my group, are thinking, because, you know, maybe I'll change my mind, maybe, I don't think you will, but...
I might.
There are a lot of...
I hold out some hope.
There are a lot of comments supporting this, this school, the high school, less on the, um, the timing of it, but the school project was the one that, when you looked at the chart...
It's, it's big.
That more people were willing to pay taxes for the high school than others. But you also have to remember that 70% of the respondents had children in foster schools, but the population of students is only 30%, so proportionally, it was over double than the respondents, and so you, you just have to balance that out.
Well, you, you kind of have to look at it this way, if you get the morning announcements for the schools, we were, that link was in it every morning, asking people to do the survey every morning, and, and we don't have that same kind of vehicle for people without children.
Right.
And also the...
And we should.
Well, and also the PTA sent it out as well, so we add both the schools and the PTA.
Yeah, well, I think, I think the same thing happens come election time, so I mean, I think it actually, just glancing at it before, it reflects pretty closely how people end up voting, I mean, it matches the referendum on Mount Daniel.
And I did ask the schools to send it out, because I wanted to have good representation in the chamber, VEPIS and LEAK, and, you know, it was smaller tranches, but, you know, we tried to balance it, so there wouldn't be a bias one way or the other. But, I think the, the reality is, because this was our first community education outreach effort, people don't understand the nuances, you know, if you see FY17, they might think the high school's gonna be done in FY17, not A and E designing, because if you look at city hall, I started that in 2007.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way. I, I, mostly right now, I really want the high school much further out or much faster, so that my youngest doesn't have to be in the middle of another school under construction, but it looks like she's gonna get it both ways, because she'll get MEH too, maybe, so it doesn't matter. Well, maybe she's learned to live with the sound of construction outside her windows.
Hey...
Well, it's distracting, you know, you can look out when your board of class had watched them pouring the concrete.
For one year, we watched, we learned how to make an elevator outside my room.
Well, when she was at Mount Daniel, they went over and toured the construction, they did a little tour of it, and at TJ, she, her teacher said that the entire class is distracted by construction, because their windows overlook some of it, and she was constantly having to redirect them away from the windows.
Oh, yeah, and they had this, uh, the sleuth, or what do you call it, for delivering the concrete, right past my windows, and it was really so cool.
Well, the bottom line is, is we do have to do something about the high school, and it's gonna happen sometime, we can move it or not move it, it's not gonna change when it happens.
You know what?
It happens when it happens.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it just doesn't matter.
It just doesn't matter.
So with five of you here, do you want me to leave it, or do you want me to split it, or do you want me to...
Well, I don't think we can split it, if we were going to do that, I feel like we'd have to ask the superintendent and the school board to say, okay, if, realistically, you're going to spend this over several years, there's a way, but maybe in their mind, because of the referendum, they, it just doesn't make sense to split it, because they are gonna have to do a referendum on a full mount, you know?
Yeah.
Separate documents, one's a referendum, one's a planning document, the government should be much more realistic, you gotta do it.
Well, can we just, can we do a request to them, that in our mind, it makes better Well, can we just, can we do a request to them that in our mind, it makes better sense to split this money because we know that construction is not going to be beginning in 17?
And put it in over, you know, three years?
In the all-in school scenario, we obviously did debt finance 100 million all at once. We split it out over three years.
Right. See, I, it bothers me that we're saying it doesn't matter where it goes because I, I think it does matter, and for the reasons I said before. And, and I understand.
I agree. I think it matters as well.
No, I, and I think your comments are quite valid, Ruth. I think people do really look at this and go, okay, great, we're going to start the high school soon. And, but realistically, we know we're not.
I mean, they're not necessarily going to look at all these charts, but they're going to certainly see the 2016, 17 numbers.
And it's going to, and people are going to totally misunderstand it.
You guys should have gone to the school board meeting to lobby them to not ask for it in FY17.
Tell them to be more realistic.
Well, it sounds like I need to make it as a separate motion.
Yeah, I'd love to be able to vote on not moving it now. If somebody wants to check with them and they think splitting it's fine, I'm not against that.
I think we'd like to ask them, as someone pointed out, it could be two different documents, what you need for referendum and what's realistic on how you're going to spend the money. And just ask them, is there a way to break it over three years to be more representative of what's actually going to happen?
I could talk to the superintendent tomorrow.
I mean, because I.
Oh, is she?
I think that's fine, although I would point out, I mean, you know, we split the library, you know, 7.3 in one.
She may not want to answer until the school board acts, unless they've given her an alternative plan, but I could certainly ask her.
Anyway, I, I think the idea of splitting seems okay, but there's plenty of stuff that is, takes years to do that shows up as one lump sum, so, I mean, it's not, I mean, I don't know.
There's a total column, so you'd still see the total project cost as the school board has adopted it.
It's not hiding anything or anything like that.
Are there any other projects that you all want adjusted? Or anything that you want to do on the issues of the green that's not happening? Or the water sale proceeds? Because the rest of the money I did, if you look at page 3-4 on the bottom line, 5.1 million is retained, water sale proceeds. And part of that was to use cash now, but part of it was to use, save cash. For the out-years, the 5 million happens to be very elegant Henderson dollar amount, but that was not planned that way. But you could do that for cash, for example. At least then, you have to have one part of the financing plan figured out.
Yeah, I'd like to continue using water fund cash for smaller projects, such as open space fund or.
I'm not sure if we're ready to put MEH in, in water funds, blue at this point because I think, I think because it's part of that bigger project in a way that we need to know more about.
No way, no way do I want to do that.
Yeah, that's why I left it.
And I'm like, I don't think we're ready to do that.
Oh, no.
We don't even know what the project was going to look like. I, I.
That's, that's.
Yeah, I, I recommended leaving half of it there and spending half now. And it is a mix of school and general government because the turf and tracker funded. But it also means you're not using it all up in one year. But if there was stuff that you really felt needed to be taken care of, that is a resource. The other thing is, you could recommend a tax rate increase to fund more things or restore fund balance, capital reserves. So, those are all the policy questions that are before you, not that you have to do any of them.
You know, I mean, part of me says, oh, it would be good to give, you know, Rexon Park a little bit more of the water fund money, but it sounds like they're not ready to use it right now.
Right.
So, I think the thing about it is, is anyone with green in here, I would just say we leave it green for this year, but our, our thing back out to them is, if you would like to see some of the out-year water fund money on, for your projects, then you need to tell us why we would be turning it, why would we be doing it? Because a lot of this green, we don't really have a reason to do it yet. I mean, they haven't, they don't have a plan in, in hand.
Yeah, I think, the only thing was, I hadn't even thought about this till it came up recently, that they had some vague plans to replace the equipment at Cherry Hill. You know, to me, I don't, depends on what they replaced it with.
Yeah, you need more than vague plans to do that.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, but now it's sort of like, that sounds like that's not, I mean, they don't have any plans to do that, nowhere in here, there's nothing but green. So, I don't really care, but to the extent that people had heard about that, and now it's basically gone away. I don't think we should do anything now, but I do wonder if they come back next year and say, well, now we've got a plan, it's 150 grand or something like that.
I think that's the comment to staff. If you have a green and if your department has green and you'd like to turn it to blue, then come back with a plan.
Get specific, yeah.
Cindy, one other, one other thing before we move on. There was something in blue that I thought was water fund, money from water fund, and you said, no, it was money from the sale of the post office. Big chimneys. Big chimneys. And, and so, is that, is that, that doesn't show up in being subtracted from the water fund?
Correct.
Well, where does it show up?
I probably should have given it another color.
I could see why you did because it's a similar type of money.
Yeah, either I have to label it water sale proceeds and land sale proceeds.
Ran out of, ran out of colors.
There's just so many colors you could do, and it tells us all it's the same.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there are only so many colors available.
Which is like, when you, every printer prints colors differently, so you can't get the tones right.
We haven't used purple.
Yeah, we have.
Oh, yes, we have.
Transportation.
Sewer.
Yeah, because you, I guess you could try to do orange, but you got to get orange because it doesn't look gold.
And did we use the, the $1 million from the sale of the post office land? That was 4.3 million? It was, that was the sale price? Have, have we used any of the other money?
Well, half of it was EDA, and half was ours, and then last year. We did use some of it. I'll have to look it back up so I don't misspeak. I could get that information for you.
So, the EDA got 2-point something?
Yeah, the, because of the square footage, it's slightly more than the city side, but it was basically 50/50, but not quite.
What are they using it on? That's what I want to know.
Well, they use 10,000 for the.
For their, for their projects, like the design, the design of their little, of the park, the downtown park is some of their money.
And also to sponsor a lot of the activities and the.
Right.
The, the grants and so forth are coming from the administrative fees for bonds that are issued. The land sale, some of it is going for the park, and then they were looking at their land banking policy. So, they have not dedicated it to anything in particular yet.
I think we're talking about signage at one point.
Are we, is the library money in time? Because I, I kind of lost track that things kind of been bouncing around, but this is what they want in terms of timing for the 8 million bucks, 8.2?
Yeah, they did the phasing on this, and that would work. I think the library board would welcome it coming a year earlier.
I would like to see it come a year early.
The challenge with that is we don't have the staff resources. I just, you know, we planned the transportation, we've got City Hall that's been in the queue. We can't do City Hall and the library and the parking structure all concurrently. We're tight on land too, so we also need places to stage construction equipment and materials, so.
Well, and is that going to be a problem with building the parking structure?
Yeah, we think, we have the staff to move the parking up a year, you think?
Yeah, we can make it work. Now, I will have to go back and see if it impacts any of the other transportation projects, but I'm hopeful now that we've got the other two people on, and they've been almost here six months, because they're doing a lot of the contract grant management, they're taking care of that paperwork and the federal requirements while our engineers and construction managers can be out in the field. So, it's better delegation of duties, but.
So, we've got a grant manager now?
Yes, that was one of the two CIP positions.
Did we get that?
It was approved in the FY15 budget, and Gina started, I think, three months ago.
So, that's been taken off your plate. Thank God.
So, what do you do with all your free talent? Come to meetings like this?
With you on CIP and Sunday Town Hall meetings and looking at.
No, it's put this thing together. It took her 48 hours.
That one did take a while. It was fun reading. It was some good stuff.
I'm looking forward to meeting. Okay, so.
Okay, we're losing it.
And, of course, the General Assembly is always in session at the same time I'm doing CIP with you all.
We're losing it.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So, is there anything else that we should be focusing on?
And since we missed out on a whole meeting.
Well, that's, this has been incorporated into this, right?
Yeah, I did last week's work session and did double duty for you all tonight.
But the fact is, is that we've got all this tonight, and then we have to act 23rd.
So, my request would be for you to still do that because Wyatt's presenting his budget on March 9. Now, I did look back at our timeline last year, and you actually ended up adopting it on March 2, which gave us less than seven days to get it in Wyatt's budget, but it's doable. It's not preferred, but it's doable. So, if, with the additional information I bring back, if you all aren't ready, then it's got to be the right decision and informed.
Okay, now, we must remember, there, there is an elephant in this room. He's in Rome, and you know that he's going to have some comments.
Oh, boy. Yeah, he'll have the same comments that he always has, so.
Okay, well, but I, but I think. I think we should.
It's just going to be a long meeting, that's all.
Yeah, so, so.
And he doesn't like.
But Rob, you know, he, he wants to be included, so.
Of course.
But he shouldn't have gone to Rome.
Well, I mean, and we're going to have to have this question about the pink again because he's not big on having the school money in there unless we're actually planning to do it then. So, I mean, and that's okay because we probably could keep discussing it for a while.
Well, I think it would, I, listen, it's going to be on camera, so I think that's a good thing.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I was just looking back at the page one of the cover memo today, and that last bullet sort of listed the key policy points. And I think at, at broad terms, you've covered most of those except for dedicated funding for transportation, and unfortunately, I don't see that happening in FY16 because of council's budget guidance.
No. So, again, we're not adding anything fancy or new. We're just, you know, there's no wiggle room, right, Russ?
Except for the water sale proceeds, there's 5 million. You wouldn't have had a parking garage otherwise.
So, I mean, but Cindy made the point that if we wanted to add stuff, we could move water sales money earlier into the CIP.
So, that can be in the future.
But that can be in the future, but I think the big thing that needs to be said to the departments now is that there is more water fund money in the future, but we need, you know, people would have to come with plans.
And we're leaning towards, towards projects like parks and rec or.
Things have been neglected.
Yeah, the things that have, and that, and that's why I'm surprised they didn't ask for more. But, you know, they have staffing problems too. So, they can't, you know, they can't do all these.
They've got the two big, huge projects going right now.
Right, so I think that, I think they feel like, get these two parks done, then they'll be ready to do another park and then another park. And, and like you said, Lincoln's in good shape, they got two more, so three, uh, three parks are going to be in pretty good shape. And that gives them some wiggle room to look at the other ones.
Big chimneys is going to be a bear.
But you know what, I, I don't know, I spend a lot of time in all the parks because of invasive removal and the plantings that we do. And, and all, you know, Cavalier Trail has a lot of very cool sections to it that I don't think a lot of people use, and, but none of our parks is unusable. I get value out of all of them.
Cindy, if Justin calls me tomorrow and asks me what we did with the CIP.
Justin Casio, school board chairman.
I didn't see them asking for any money.
Well, it sounds like they wanted, we can't, we can't put that 250 for the planning thing in the CIP.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Can't do.
Well, what does BLA mean?
Boundary line adjustment, which is a legal term for bringing the 38 acres into the city.
So, it's for the task force, the steering.
And Wyatt and I have both talked to the superintendent, so she knew that before I presented the CIP to you all.
Okay, so, so my conversation with, with Justin was, we didn't, neither of us knew what we were talking about.
Basically, the challenge will be, council needs to fund it in the operating budget.
Right, okay.
Or the school board.
That's the perfect answer.
And it can't be in the CIP.
And, and the same, just because we didn't call it out on the, tonight's meeting, but the same holds for the school buses. School buses are not eligible for CIP, just like the dump trucks and the police cars aren't. So, the challenge will be, it has to be funded in operating budget. That's either general government operating budget or school local transfer.
Okay, can you explain to us again why school buses?
And dump trucks and all of it, they made it.
Can't, because that's, people, you know, I happened to ask that, and I said, I really can't give you an answer right now.
It's also an accounting rule. Your vehicles don't have a 10-year life.
Okay. It's a 10-year deal again.
Replacing them, and now, we tend to hold on to school buses and dump trucks for 20 years, but that's not the way we should be.
But like fire, fire trucks.
Yeah, the fire truck has like a seven-year life, but we.
Yes, and an ambulance is five years.
But we did a $90,000 ladder truck in my first CIP.
Yeah, that was the last time vehicles were in the CIP.
Oh, okay, so that wasn't happening.
Vehicles cannot be in the CIP. Because it used to be, we'd group some stuff.
Yes, and so, there's also confusion in the community because people will say it was in the CIP. You bond financed it. It wasn't in the CIP, but we bond financed it because you could do capital in your operating budget.
You can borrow to buy a car.
Yeah, you could short-term lease cars, the schools' computers were leased, you could do capital bond financing. So, it just gets sometimes confusing, but school buses, dump trucks, and police are not in the CIP.
Because, man, that, you know, got to have.
So, there's, there's going to be a lot of.
They want to shoot at targets, then it's in.
So, there's going to be a lot, a lot of pressure on the operating budget because none of the fleet is in, the boundary line adjustment money is not in.
What, for the general government facility reinvestment, that's mostly green in the coming years. You know, one of the things I've been frustrated with is, we haven't, we haven't reinvested in anything in 50 years, and now we're, all the, all the bills are coming due. Are we, what is that stuff? Should we be saying like, hey, that shouldn't be green, we're just going to?
That staff would recommend that be funded, and it's not being funded, and that's because the types of things in that pot, as it is with the school's modernization, is not things that you generally finance for 10 years. And so, it has to be cash, and there's no pay-as-you-go money.
But it could be like water system money, water.
It could be.
I just don't want us to like, I mean, I, I know we can't do everything all at the same time, but I sure hope that 10 years from now, we'll all be sitting here saying like, let's start setting money aside now for the next high school in 50 years so our grandkids don't have to.
The chief financial officer and I, as part of our CIP, have consistently said, you need to fund your capital reserves, that's your facilities, and then you need a fleet and equipment reserve, so you're replacing vehicles and computers and stuff. It takes, it's hard to get that initial setup, and then you just dedicate a little bit every year, and 10 years later, you have it. Philosophically, by policy for the water sale proceeds, the intent was to do something so you could see what you got for the sale of that large asset. If you start doing it in facilities for this roof repair, this HVAC repair, you, you lose the.
I appreciate that, I just, I just, somehow, we got to make sure sometime we start setting aside this money.
I kind of go back to this again, it's, it's yellow right now, and then it goes green.
The yellow is the last of the PEGO that we had.
Right, PEGO's we have. So, I, I can't.
Where does PEGO come from? I, I don't know.
It's just cash that we, reserves we had in there.
When your fund balance goes over the 17% policy, anything over that goes into your capital reserve. So, if you look at 3-4.
So, so by FY18, I'm sure it won't happen, but we could have more PEGO, and that green could go to yellow.
Yeah, we could have more PEGO, or we might get more PEGO later. But I, again, I, my whole thing, I think our challenge to staff is for those greens that they would like to have blue, next year, they have to come back and tell us why.
That's fine, but I guess that's my question. I mean, general government facility investment, to me, sounds sort of like, hey, crap breaks, we have to fix it up. Excuse my language.
But I think for CIP, we're talking about like HVAC systems.
Why not? I'm just wondering what it's in here for. It's in here for.
But, again, we, I, I don't want to use water funds for.
HVAC systems, yeah, right. But I'm just saying like.
So, that can't, it's got to be something really tangible.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I think that it's got to, it's got to be publicized. That's where the money is going to this particular project. It's a good project, it's for the entire community, and that's why we're giving it.
That'd have to be a criteria.
So, we have, for the last three years, brought your fund balance down to 17% by using PEGO. FY17, it's down to zero at 17%. If there's more revenues, which isn't happening right now, or underspending, and it goes over 17% by, then by policy, it goes into capital reserves. We had more flexibility before with the assessment year and the tax year, budget year weren't aligned.
Oh, yeah.
They're aligned now, so that differential isn't going to be that surplus for flexibility anymore. And so, unless there's a dedicated commitment to fund a little bit each year, 10, 20 years from now, we'll be revisiting the same challenge.
That commitment is, is a CIP thing or is a, is a operating budget?
Operating budget.
So, that's city council, I should go, I should email city council.
So, it has to be a policy by council.
And I realize that's challenging because people will say you have too much money in the bank, but, you know.